Okay, we are live streaming.
All right, we got it.
Recording right now. Oh, gosh.
You want to use my, um?
We might have to, but I don't know how to. We tried that last time we didn't record over. But I'm gonna keep working on that. I'll see what's happened.
Well, just in case, I'll search for it.
Okay. Danny, you mind if I ask? Sorry. Technical difficulties.
Just tell me when you're ready.
Um, we're live streaming, so we can start.
Great. Scott, you ready?
Um. Let me think here. Yep.
Under camera?
All right. Sorry for the delay, having a little bit of technical difficulties. Thanks for your patience. Uh, we're gonna call the meeting to order today at 5:15. Uh, let's start with roll call.
Sheena Martinez, District One.
Paul Carey for District Two.
Philip King, District Three.
Todd Sheerheart is out today.
Herb Dyer, District Five.
And Darren Schroeder, Mayor. All right, if everybody would please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America, and to be regarded for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. Our pledge allegiance to the Constitution, one state, under God, one and invisible.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Pastor Mitch Cox from Calvary, uh, Philister. Good to see you again.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Uh, before I pray, I'd like to read a Bible scripture from Proverbs 16 verse three, and it reads, "Commit your work to the Lord, and your thoughts will be established." Let's pray. Father God, we thank you so much for tonight, and we lift up this city council meeting to you, Lord. We pray that you will lead them in their thoughts, you will lead them in their agendas, you will lead them in their plans. Father, may there be unity in their talks, and may their work be established by your steps, Lord. We thank you, Lord, for them. We ask you to continue to bless them, keep them in your care. Father, we love you, in Christ's name we pray. Amen. Amen. God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, Scott, you want to hand me over the, uh, the dongle and we'll get started on citizens' comments? Do we have anybody that wants to speak for citizens' comments?
Kyle McVay, 307 Madrid. Uh, several months ago, we had an issue, or not an issue, we had concerns about, uh, property that was residential, wanting to be turned commercial, and then offered a, uh, special use permit, which was all denied by council. My point is, is that issues are coming up now, and is the council having any group or any board or any authority that's working on this to put an ordinance in place so that we have something that can be either enforced, controlled, or looked to for definition? Because we don't have it currently now. And if we just keep, uh, pushing the can down the road, we're going to have more problems and more hard dealings with everybody and the residents. So, please, work as a council to see that we get something in place so that we can address this. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do we have anybody else?
Arnie Delacy, 109 River Bluff. Just three things that are coming up to let all of you know over the world out there. First thing is Kid Fish 22th, on February the 12th, down at the Landmark Inn from 10 to 2:00. Uh, there should be somewhere like six to eight game wardens. And last year, we went through, I think, with 135 kids came and fished, and the trout all come from the state fish hatchery in San Marcos, and they'll be delivered on the 11th. Adults can't fish that day, but they can come back after 2:00 and fish. And for the next two weeks, roughly, the fishnets will be in place to hold all the trout in the mill trace, and then they're released. So, if you want to go fishing after that, that's one thing to be thinking about. The other, uh, this is these rules, so to speak, for the sixth annual poppy poster contest, which all of you up there are aware of, I think everybody in the audience is too. But, uh, we're having that, again, we will be having the adult, the senior high school, middle school, and then kids categories. Uh, there's cash prizes to be won on all of it, and the deadline for turning everything in is March the 5th. So, it's been publicized to, uh, all the school districts in the county. There's informational pieces been put out in multiple towns about this. And this morning, in a Gold Medina meeting, it was also me handing out some of these, and several people took them in Natalia and Lightland and so forth. So, we probably, hopefully, have a good turnout for people wanting to be the poppy con- poppy poster contest. Yeah. The other one, the 11th Annual Tour de Casterville Walk One Ride Event's coming up April 2nd. These I just picked up yesterday afternoon from where we're getting printed, complimentary in San Antonio. They're starting to be distributed all around. Uh, so if you or anybody wants to sign up, and some of my volunteers are sitting here, they have yet to say they're volunteering, possibly we haven't asked them, but the same crew, I hope they're volunteering. Anyway, uh, registration's alive on active.com like it has been since day one. Anybody wants any of these displaced anywhere around town, let me know. I have about 200 of them out in my car, and they are pretty much starting to be distributed over town anyway. That's it. We hope to have somewhere in the neighborhood, like the last year, um, about 325 or so participants, plus the American Volk Sport Association intertwines with us. In the last few years, they've had between 75 and 90 people participate. So, it's just let you know what's out there, and hopefully people eager, ready to go. And Councilman Carey's gonna ride the 60-mile bike route this year. Right? Anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Arnie. All right, do we have anybody else? All right, next item is the consent agenda, and that is minutes for January 11th, 2021. It said January 11th, 2021. Uh, I believe that is January 11th, 2022, regular called council meeting.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. Uh, do I have a motion on that?
I move we accept the minutes as written.
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right, next item is Mayor's Report. All right, I, uh, flipped this one around just a little bit. I'll try and run through it as quickly as possible. We're gonna talk today about, uh, a little bit about utility rates. We're gonna have some more information coming up. There's been a lot of questions about it. I want to make sure that we are very, very open about what is happening, uh, so we'll walk through a little bit about that. Um, we're gonna talk about, uh, there has been just a rash of scams targeting the senior population. Uh, that's happened to somebody that's very near to me, and, uh, we've started engaging with, uh, some of the cyber crimes units and some of the folks that are fighting against this from law enforcement, uh, so we'll talk about, a little bit about that. Uh, we're gonna talk about some of the strategic planning efforts that I've been working with Scott on, um, so that we can, uh, make sure that the city's moving in a, in a really good direction, uh, in terms of our planning efforts. And then the last item is staffing. So, uh, let's start into utility rates. Question, did rates raise? So, um, I think that overall, um, I think overall it ends up being a small increase in rates. What you'll see is if your rates are, um, if, if you fully utilize, uh, if you have a, a home and you fully utilize the rates, your rates are gonna probably drop just a little bit, be about the same or drop just a little bit. If you're a very low consumer, you'll see them raise just a little bit. Uh, and I'll have some, I was working to get some examples, didn't get them quite in time, so we'll talk about those. We'll show, uh, in the next council meeting, we'll actually run through and show you some very specific examples of usage and what's happening with it. Uh, but the bottom line is, um, the, the, uh, the reason that we were doing this, the biggest reason is because the utilities for years now have not been, you've had one utility subsidizing another utility, and the problem, the biggest problem is that the, uh, electric has been subsidized or has been subsidizing the other two or the other utilities. And the one thing that we don't have in the new development is electrical. And so we wanted to make sure that we, our current rate payers, are not paying for the new people coming in and subsidizing their rates. So, we had to get that level set before we started getting new homes in. It's something that needed to be done for a long time, and it just got level set. It's a bit of a surprise to some folks. I think the biggest surprise is because the electrical is the most variable rate probably, and the sewer is the least variable rate, and so we've had some folks calling in about that, and that's why I wanted to hit it head-on and say, this is where we are. Rates have not raised since 2018, so a slight raise is in order, uh, just to keep up with the, the inflation. I know, uh, Councilman Dyer has been warning about this, making sure that we're staying on top of this. Um, we can't let the, um, the inflation get beyond what we're actually charging for.
I, I have, I have something real quick, 'cause I've had a few of, uh, my, my constituents contact me, and their bills went up $20. And when they called to inquire about it at City Hall, they were told, yeah, it's gonna be going up again in March. So, if we can...
I wonder if that's when sewer, when does sewer reset?
It would be reset, not necessarily going up. It depends on how much water is...
But they're being told going up, so if we can get the verbiage...
Absolutely.
Corrected and everything, so I'm like, no, no, that's not, no, no, so please, if we can get the verbiage, everybody on the same board there. I appreciate it.
Yeah, anytime we get a lot of calls like this, it stands out to me, and we have had a lot of calls, a lot of questions, and so we're getting questions, we're gonna hit them as head-on as possible, uh, and make sure that we're keeping people informed.
Thank you.
So, thank you. I appreciate you calling that out. Uh, and then another question was about the timing. So, um, in the council meeting where we had, uh, had voted on this, the timing was agreed that it would start with the billing, uh, in January for the December, um, usage. And so, uh, this passed bill was the one that you would see the, the changes on, uh, and there were some questions about, they thought that it was supposed to start January 1st, but our billing cycle goes beyond that, so that's what we decided is in the new year that we would start it. So, that is the timing of it. Uh, if anybody has any further questions, please do get in touch with us, and we'll make sure that we work through this.
Can I say the same thing in different words?
Please.
So, uh, just what the mayor said, when that ordinance was passed, it was passed explicitly by the council, uh, the minute order stated that the new rates would go into effect on January 1st for the December bills. And I, I know that's what you just said, but just re-clarifying and using slightly different words. Thank you.
I think the actual wording was, a motion was made by Councilman Dyer and duly seconded by Councilmember Carey to approve the effective January 2022 for the month of December 2021 billing cycle. Yep? Okay. All right. Next thing, um, let's talk about scams. Uh, it's also known as phishing, typically spelled with a P-H. Um, they are on the rise. Again, this is, this is top of mind for me right now, just because somebody very close to us has just recently fallen victim to this. But as we talk to, uh, we've been working with San Antonio Cyber Crimes, um, and with some of the other agencies that are involved with things like this, and what they're telling us is that it is rampant right now. There are a lot of people that are targeting, especially senior citizens, uh, and they are, uh, I put on here, and I'll, I'll go a little bit out of order, these are con artists. And con stands for confidence. They build confidence, and what they do is they can, they make you believe that something is happening. Uh, a couple of years ago, we actually had a, uh, one of our, our friends from the area call us up in a panic saying, hey, we need to put together some money, 'cause the IRS just called us, and they're gonna come over and arrest us if we don't pay our IRS. And they were confused by it, and they were worried about it, and it was somebody with kids, and they didn't want, you know, their kids to be stuck there. And we told them specifically, don't, the IRS will not call you, will not come and, um, and arrest you. And so, what I wanted to do is to get something where we can talk to people about, these are the kinds of scams that are out there. Um, so in talking with the San Antonio Cyber Crimes, um, and the agencies that they're working with, they're trying to put together something where we've got a program, we'll do like a town hall, I'd like to, to, uh, livestream it as well, just so that we can talk through some of the things that they're running into, what kinds of things are legit, what kinds of things are not legit, and just to give you some education on it. I think it's gonna be really helpful, um, to, to see how, how they're approaching this. I think it's better to be prepared with that. Okay. Next, let's talk about the strategic planning review. Now, um, the mayor and council areas of responsibility, um, Scott and I were working through this late last year, just trying to be really, really clear about what we need to be doing. And, and, uh, I think everybody received the, the handbook from, uh, TML about what our responsibilities are, and, um, I don't know that it actually stated communication. It's finance and policy. And you can boil everything into finance and policy. I put communication in there because I believe that communication is possibly the highest, um, responsibility that we have, and that is two-way communication. That is listening to concerned citizens, things that are going on, and implementing and talking to them about what we're doing. And so, um, so to do that, I think that it's really good to start working through some of these initiatives that can address them more, um, more specifically. So, uh, portions of this are, uh, are still in structure. So, um, I'm just gonna go over this really, really quickly. So, we're gonna talk about the strategy, the reporting cadence, and, uh, what corporate America calls objectives and key results, OKRs. Uh, so we'll kind of walk through what that looks like. So, our strategy, um, developing the plan, and so that is solidify public sentiment. Make sure that we're driving data-driven decisions, um, to plan for success. So, we identify the goals, the objectives. We define the measurements, which are the key results, and then we develop a plan to achieve those, and those would be initiatives inside of here. And then communicate, communicate progress. So, um, we'll talk a little bit about what the rhythm is. So, there are things that we do monthly, things that we do quarterly, and things that we do annually. I'm making some recommendations with this. I definitely want to get council's, uh, feedback on this, and so this will be something that will be iterative. Uh, I'm just introducing the concepts right now that, that I'd like to run through. So, when I look at categorizing the approach to improving quality of life, if you look, ultimately, we are responsible for improving quality of life, making sure that we have a nice, affordable, reliable, safe place to live. And so, I, I have talked about this before, my biggest goal is to, um, thwart badness, to stop badness and to encourage goodness. And so, I kind of just separated it into that. So, plain existence, thwarting badness, keeping bad things from happening. So, core services would be reliable utilities, um, roads and thoroughfares that are navigable and comfortable and, and safe. Safety overall, so, safety overall, and that is on our streets, in our homes, in our businesses, and in town. And then codes and ordinances, the things, so this isn't just developing them, which they need a lot of work, but it's also tracking them, enforcing them, and having accountability to the people that we represent to make sure that we are actually following that. And then working in community, providing information about what's going on, gathering feedback. Those are kind of out of order, but they're both important. Uh, customer service, and that is, uh, how we, city staff, how city council, how we are treating the people that we represent. For example, when people call up, we should let them know exactly what's going on, and so it's striving to ensure that we have that good customer service, that excellent customer service in everything that we do. Uh, and then promoting volunteerism. We have, uh, we have the luxury, the benefit, the honor of so many people stepping up and volunteering for so many things. You see a, a number of them in here. There are people all over town that, this is what they do, this is how I got involved, this is how I think a lot of us have gotten involved, is through volunteering, and it's really, as we have new people in, um, how do we promote that volunteerism and let them know that this is expected? We all lock arms and we get things done together. And then on the other side is inspiring goodness, and this is really living. So, the core, the existence, that is base, that is where we start with. Once we get that under control, we can start looking at beautification, we can start looking at fun, we can start looking at improving public spaces, um, uh, finding ways to help private properties increase, uh, our land and facilities, historic improvements, uh, and then funds for events and festivals and sports and activities. Those can all be done as long as the, they can't be done in, um, in the absence of getting the, the core services and working in community done first. So, that's, uh, the, the general direction that we're, that we're tracking with this. And part of this is tracking in key areas. It's identifying what these key areas are. So, where are we gonna track results? We want to track results, have, have it set up so that we can define what does success look like with RPD? What does success look like with our streets? So, um, I think I have a thing in here later on, but, um, one of my favorite quotes is, if you aim at nothing, you're very likely to hit it.
Every time.
Every time. Thank you. Was that zig? I think it was zig.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, these are the, the areas that we're looking at. How do we, uh, what areas are we gonna be tracking? And then reporting. So, in that reporting that we talked about, um, the, the monthly review, so this is a monthly review, um, or trying to figure out, what do we do monthly, what do we do quarterly, what do we do annually? Monthly, um, so today, uh, after this, we're gonna have the, uh, council member board and commission reports, we've got the mayor's report, we've got the, uh, department reviews. Uh, I think that we still need to refine some of that and to include some of the metrics that we're talking about, just to make it a little bit more specific to the folks that really want to see how we're tracking to success. We're gonna identify what success, the success looks like, we're gonna figure out how do we measure it, and we're gonna report out on those measurements. Uh, and then major events review. So, if there's something, um, like the winter storms last year, or trampoline NATO, where power lines were getting blown over and, sorry, that's my highlight, I saw trampolines all over the place. But anytime we have a major event, it is reviewing that, and, um, so that would be kind of a monthly cadence. I thought it was clever. I'm just gonna point it out, there's 12 months, it's 12 o'clock, it's on the clock. I thought it was clever.
That's you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, and then quarterly view, review.
Four quarters.
Yes, yes, I do have to pat myself. Sorry, I'm dorky. So, uh, what do we report on, on a quarterly basis? Transportation plan status. We all talk about the traffic, how terrible it is, what are we doing about it? So, I want to make sure that we are, um, we're working on it every single quarter, that we're reporting out on it every single quarter. Revenue reports. Where do we stand with tax revenues? Where, where do we stand, uh, with, uh, with our budget across the board? Department reviews. So, the quarterly department review is gonna be, um, slightly different than the monthly. Monthly's gonna be a little bit more, uh, tactical, the quarterly's a little bit more strategic, so new initiatives report, the things that they're working on, um, uh, talking about where we've gotten with those, uh, some of the performance metrics, the budget status, so, um, percent of budget spent for the year and how we're tracking, making sure that we're staying on ta- on track with that budget, and then any major projects that are upcoming. And then board, with the boards and commissions, looking at planned activities and accomplishments. Uh, I think I'm getting a little bit too worried on this, so I'm just gonna rush through the rest. Uh, and then annual review, um, these are, these are some things that I think that we need to make sure that we are learning from the past. Those who refuse to learn from the past are doomed to repeat it, and there have been a lot of really great decisions made by, by the city in the past. There's been some stinkers, and we'll make some stinkers as well, but there's been a lot of great stuff that's happening. Um, one of the great things about the Parks Master Plan is that they went back and looked at the previous master plans, and Helen was kind enough to supply tons and tons of information so we could not just recreate something brand new from, from scratch, but build on what was done in the past. Um, and I think that we need to be doing that with all of them. So, we'll do a review and refresh of the mission, vision, values. Um, I know that Scott's doing some planning on that right now. Review and update of existing plans and studies. If you look at the thoroughfare plan, the drainage plan, other studies that we've done, making sure that we stay fresh on that so that council is up to date with it and so that we're communicating that with the public. Annual updates of city departments, what's changed in them, overview of critical infrastructure, where are we making, uh, changes to make sure that our, our, uh, utilities are more reliable, uh, review of city income structure, review of historic details. So, there's, there's a bunch of items that I think that we should be going through every year. Um, OKR structure, these are the objectives and key results. There's a lot of work still to be done with this, so we're looking at doing this as citywide, uh, what does success look like for the city, uh, drilling that down to by department, and then targeting and measuring the results. Uh, so some examples would be, um, Scott's been working on, what is our open headcount? We have positions that we have funded, that we don't have filled, that we need to have. Uh, so it's really tracking, how long does it take us to fill those? And if we're looking at that, and we have a, a position that hasn't been filled, then we need to, um, get more creative, we need to look at why are we not filling it, and what can we do to help fill that? The number and duration of utility outages, complaints versus time to resolve, and this could be with, um, billing, this could be with, uh, ordinances, uh, code compliance, any of those things. And then time to complete the tasks, so that's more of an internal, um, function of, uh, if we have, uh, we have a...
Permits are a really good example of that.
Permits is a great example. So, if you file a permit, you have a certain amount, we, we set the time that we expect it to be done in, and then we just track through that. All right. So, that's what we've got on that, more to come on that, um, and that leads us into, we just talked about staffing. So, the next staffing item, I don't have anything on because we're gonna talk about Scott. So, Scott has made it a year, somehow survived an entire year with us. Uh, we were thinking about, uh, about announcing this last week, but he still had one more day to complete the entire year, so...
That's great.
So, thank you. Thank you. We are honored to have you. You've done some great things already.
I gotta earn it. I got even, that one day.
If you remember his very first day, uh, yeah, Deborah, go ahead and bring that in. Um, the very first day, we put him on the spot and, and he had to face Sheena and her wrath, so...
Yeah, why hadn't I done River Bluff yet?
Exactly. No, you've done a really great job. So, we were gonna have a cake, we were gonna have a pie, and Scott doesn't like cakes, and he doesn't like pies, but he does love root beer floats.
That's true.
So, we have root beer floats.
Thank you very, very much.
We have some to share.
So thoughtful.
That are now melted, 'cause Darren talked too long.
Thank you very much.
But we just wanted to say, thank you, we appreciate you very much. You've done a great job.
Yes.
Kevin maybe doesn't like cakes.
Thank you.
She makes me more of those cakes.
Oh, careful there.
Thank you.
Well done, well done. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very, very much, Deborah.
You're a huge talker.
Yeah, they asked me the other day, and I thought that was a little sneaky, but I didn't know what they... We were talking about birthdays, my birthday's not till August, so I didn't, I wasn't too worried about it.
Well, I know that you know somebody who makes spectacular cakes.
I know, that's the irony.
Yeah.
Makes great cakes, but I'm a... Thank you.
So, yes, very much thank you, look forward to many years to come.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, uh, next item, let's, uh, go through the council board liaison reports. Um, we'll start with, uh, District One.
Um, our meeting was canceled due to COVID, so...
All right.
Um, PNZ and the zoning board of adjustments have not had a meeting since our last meeting. Nothing to report?
Uh, the Historic Landmark Commission met and approved a couple of projects since the last time I reported. Um, they were basically additions to existing, um, or repairs, or, one was a tear-down building and a replacement of it, um, and another one had to do with building a new building in the rear of the property. And I think that was it, just those two, right? Yeah. Oh, and then the restoration, was that the restoration on, on the...
Oh, that was all right, no, I, I mean, it's all right, sorry.
Well, one addition, but they, they basically all, in no big controversies, they were all approved, and I felt it, so worked out well.
The Library Advisory Board met this month. Unfortunately, we had a, a few, uh, unfortunate things. The, the president of the board lost his father to a heart attack, so he wasn't able to come to the meeting. We still had a very good meeting. Uh, we had a new board member, but she was not able to attend, so hopefully... So hopefully at the next meeting, we'll have five. But I think there was one thing I'd just like to mention that I thought was an outstanding achievement. The TACR grants have provided the city mobile hotspots. They come in a little plastic container like a book. If you have a library card and you don't have internet at your house, you can check one out and take it home for a week. And it will run up to eight things in your house. Of course, the more you put on it, the slower it's going to go. But if you don't have something and you get this hotspot, you might be able to get the basic things that your kids need to do their homework or to do research or to help your family. So I think that was a great achievement that we were able to benefit from. And of course, in the future years, we're going to have to provide the funding to keep the service because it's not cheap. But this year, for the first year, it's paid for by the TACR grant. But that's quite an achievement. So they're, they're, they're really doing a lot of good work for the city and they're really focused on the next five to 10 years. And I think we're going to hear from them in the near future in one of the city council meetings.
Sounds great. Great, thank you.
Another Todd's ass, and I'll, I'll just mention that for at least the zoning board, the airport, the joint airport zoning board between the city and the county, they have met. They recently discussed adoption of the bylaws and rules and orders themselves, the scope of what they'll be doing. They covered kind of some pretty hefty items, if you will, but, but all as a first step before the process. So that took place just a few days ago. And as far as the airport board, I believe that was in the last report that y'all got on January 11th. There was an update in that about.
They canceled.
So January, you have them canceled, they might be in February.
All right, thank you. All right, next item is presentation on proposed Parks Master Plan.
And for that, we have Devin Fredrickson, our director of parks, and Patrick Connor, one of our volunteers extraordinaire, and certainly someone who feels like he's, might have given birth to this document. Because he certainly put a lot of labor and a lot of hours into it. Devin, you are ready.
All right. Well, as many of you know, we had started the Parks Master Planning discussion about the time I first started here. And I would say in early 2020, we had the opportunity to apply for a grant came forward for Microsoft for an opportunity and the Friends of the Park applied for that in spring of 2020. And I believe in summer 2020, we heard that they received that grant for the funding of $21,000 to cover a Parks Master Plan. So initially, this project was a timeline a lot shorter than what ended up happening towards COVID and everything because we kicked off this project in the fall of 2020. And with COVID and whatnot, everything sort of got really delayed. So as of right now, we are bringing to you a, a draft of the final product. We do have some changes to do internally and, but at this point in time, our consultant, we've reached, you know, the, the capacity that he's willing to continue with us with just due to the fact that, you know, he's backlog on projects and he has to do forward. And it's a lot bigger than, you know, his scope was originally. So with that being said, this is a very short and sweet kind of rundown. Realistically, we would love to just get the feedback from y'all at the end so that way if we are, we do have any changes, we can make those and get this ready for, to be brought back again with the final proof. And then hopefully a resolution being presented as the city accepting this and moving forward with it. So I'll kick off this presentation. First and foremost, we wanted to thank everyone that's been involved with this project. It's taken months and I know Patrick here, hundreds if not thousands of hours worth of work putting things together. Patrick, he's led the front from the Friends, the Parks Board and the just, I mean, community member for this project. Like I mentioned, Vista Design was, or Vista Design and Planning was the company that put this document together. But Patrick spearheaded this project from the get-go of, you know, substance, what needed to be in there and really helped us get this together. But of course, Microsoft, they, their community outreach department's grant, we couldn't have done this without it, at least at that point in time. City Council, of course, y'all's help and support. Steering Committee, we had, you know, our, our stakeholders, which is all the groups involved and the, the parks and, you know, the people that would directly benefit. But our stakeholders, our, our steering committee, Brianna, David, Dr. Warbach, and many others, including myself, were there to, you know, go over some of the details, go over the rough drafts, give input, corrections. The Friends were constantly involved with meetings, so they're the next one on there. They've had dozens of meetings to discuss this and, you know, we're not done yet and, you know, the time and effort they've put into this is astonishing. And then of course, the Parks Board, who is, you know, the overseer of the department before it comes to y'all. And we've had a little bit of issues with getting some meetings fulfilled, but, you know, we, we've talked about this while we were going along and it's, it's been very productive. So moving forward with our presentation, the items that I'm going to go over are, are these five. Vision statement and primary goals, public engagement and data collection, park standards and guidelines, park and recreation priorities. And then of course, the last part, which would be the involvement with y'all, questions. So the vision statement is listed right here. Maintain and improve Castroville's present and future city parks to provide park patrons of all ages and abilities safe, high-quality, year-round venues that maximize active and passive recreational programs as well as educational programs. So this was something that I think embodies a lot of what the city as a whole would strive for, but with parks, you know, we get to do the fun stuff. So this really outlined, you know, that model. The primary goals, this, like I said, this isn't, as you'll notice in the master plan, there's a whole, well, not a half page, but there's probably seven or eight really high priority items. But this really covers the, the, the main purpose of parks and recreation, especially backed behind by a master plan, which is of course for Castro, cultural heritage awareness during community growth. And I know that that's a high priority, keeping, you know, our, our cultural history, the heritage, our historical parks, I know is a, a big topic. So, you know, we, we really wanted to keep that as a top goal and incorporate that because we don't want to lose our, our small town feel and, you know, as a community, it's important. Recreation diversity and accessibility. Really what this comes down to is we have an ever-growing, as you'll, you'll see through our documentation of our, our surveys, there's a lot of things, I mean, you might have not thought of that people in the community want to see or have an interest in. Of course, we can't meet all of these needs, but we can definitely try to meet the needs of those that, you know, we have a group that can provide to that group. So diversity, that really comes down to, we can't just focus on what we currently have. We need to look at the future, especially when we, when I, y'all hear me come talk about football and soccer, you know, we had soccer and, you know, we have a lot of these sports that are, I mean, when I first got here, softball, they had 15, 20 people. And now they're bursting at the seams. And they're making it work because they're getting multiple teams set up, but other organization or other little groups look towards us to help, help them grow. And that was something we see as a primary goal. And then of course, park standards. You'll hear that, or you'll, you'll read that throughout this Parks Master Plan is we, we have really looked at the National Parks and Recreation Association's standards, but across the board, as a city, it's great for us to take that and absorb it and make our own so that that way when we have future development come in, we can have a standard so moving forward, they can follow that standard. Because there is some things that, you know, are needed. I mean, regional park has a large amounts of resources and items, but standard wise, you know, we need to figure out, you know, does it need more bathrooms? Does it need more sports courts and stuff like that? So with that, park standards, there's a wide range of things that that'll cover. So the, with this master plan, originally the reason I had spoken to the Parks Board and to the Friends of the Parks about getting a master plan was due to the fact that I did not want to push my thoughts of what the city needed without getting the data behind that for a master plan. So with that being said, you know, the community was a huge part of our data collection, which it should be. Online and paper surveys, we received well over, or well exceeding 200 paper and online, and it was extensive, as you'll see in the results. It was not just a, do you like regional park? It was very consistent to what a lot of the national companies, pay companies do and collect that information. And, you know, we had a really good community turnout and that really helped us. Stakeholders, focus groups, that was something I worked with. A lot of our sports, boy scouts, girl scouts, you know, groups that utilize our parks. What do they need? What, what do they want to see? And then I absorbed that and tried to create a, a plan with the help of the Friends and the board that is feasible for us. And then of course, public meetings such as this one to get the input that we needed to move forward with that. Prior reports and NRP standards, NRP standards is sort of what I went over a second. It just outlines what the National Parks and Recreation Association considers feasible to communities, but then also needs that the citizens or the patrons have requested or absolutely need. Because if you have a park that you, you know, are requiring or you are having amenities and it's been multiple hours of use, you're going to need a restroom. But if you have a park that's like a loop for a walking trail, a lot of times those don't need it. So, you know, we wanted to review those standards and implement those into our Parks Master Plan. Once again, park standards comes up. The park standards and guidelines, what that is out, going to lay the foundation for is of course developers, but also for ourselves. A lot of our CIP improvements or the future bond improvements, those are going to focus on these key items. Of course, with park standards, accessibility, we can't build anything if we don't have, you know, need DADA requirements. And there's a lot of stipulations that moving forward, we were grandfathered in because we didn't do anything improvement-wise to some of these facilities, but unfortunately we need to do that. But then also as a community, it's a good foundation to attract people and also, also offer inclusivity to all kinds of groups. So accessibility is something that we are going to strive to focus on. Adilities, that sort of goes into what, what area, or what amenity does this park require? So you'll see in our, our layout from the National Parks and Recreation Association, it outlines acreage, accessibility as in as a neighborhood park, as a regional park, and it goes through and it lists things out and it shows a breakdown so that if I leave, if other people leave, there's a guideline that even as the council, y'all can make a recommendation so if, per say, the next group, the developers come in here and ask what's needed, we have an outline for them and what as a city we want to see for parks. Of course, with the developers, public access, park standards, of course, we go back to the original, and parkland development outside of drainage areas. These are things that we, as the Friends of the Park, the Parks Board, and then speaking with our consultant, are, are huge things that we want to offer or the guideline that we would like to, to see implemented. Because some community developers will come in and the park isn't accessible. They consider it, they have stipulations that they, if there's no guidelines, they, they have nothing to go off of. So this is sort of something we outlined in there. Drainage areas, that, that item is really interesting because a lot of developers, that's usually the first place they pick is parkland. Well, you know, if an amenity can be damaged down the road because of that, it, it sort of doesn't make sense. So it's good to have those guidelines and allow us something to work off of.
Just to speak to that just briefly. So how that works, just in practice, is you give, if a developer wants to donate land as part of the park dedication ordinance, then you give partial credit, if you will, for flood zoned areas. And you state that those can only be green belts or trail systems, that kind of thing. And the actual parks, playground equipment, ball fields, or what other things that may have planned for their developments or neighborhood, those need to be in non-flood prone areas. And they get a different level of credit depending on how much space and how many dollars they put in. So that's the type of thing that Devin's referencing.
So on to the next part, Parks and Recreation Priorities. Like I said before, we have a, a ton of priorities beyond this, but the ones that I wanted to touch on, of course, number one is acquire parkland. We are very, I wouldn't say very fortunate, but we, we have some areas that have been developed, such as Regional Park, which is a large park, which we are very blessed to have. It's a beautiful park. It brings people here. And then we have areas such as Lions Park that really haven't had anything major done to them in years. So, but moving forward, we're not going to have those things to work off of. If our community keeps growing, we need more parkland. And as we talk through the sports, the sports needs, those are something, I mean, you can't just keep putting them on top of each other. Yes, we can make multipurpose fields for certain sports, but you can't do that for others. We can't put, I mean, realistically, you can't put senior softball on top of youth baseball. It doesn't work like that. And so reviewing our master plan, we really need to look at acquiring parkland when feasible because we are going to have that opportunity in the future and we're going to really appreciate the fact that there's no more land. Regional Park Community Center, that's something that we've been working on for, you know, since we had some damage noticing at the Regional Parks Park Office and along with the, the pool building. This is something that goes beyond that. One of our major areas that's lacking is indoor space when it comes to kids camps, you know, meeting spaces. We have people that come all the time and, you know, of course, we're rented out during the summer, but during the fall months, they ask us, hey, is the rec center usable? Unfortunately, no, it's for the RV residents. And we do have options for continuing to grow our educational and our community get-togethers, functions, all kinds of things by having that space along with the front entrance to the park and meet multiple different goals. Park infrastructure improvements, that one comes down to not just the basic stuff as we would see with replacement of buildings and whatnot, but, you know, we, we really need to look at power. I know right now I'm working with a contractor for lighting. You know, we need to look and see if those, the infrastructure is going to be able to accommodate some of our new growth and, you know, that's something that we really need to, to look at, especially when it comes to ADA and, you know, accessibility. And then of course, we went over this earlier, recreation diversity. Since I've been here, I, I think I probably have four or five groups that have got pretty popular and they weren't here before. Diving, diving is one of them. And we're getting continuously, you know, asked and pressured to, you know, offer more time. And that's great. I mean, we want to offer, we don't want to be known for just, you know, two sports. We want kids to be able to choose what they want to do. And, you know, that opportunity starts with the accessibility. And for planning, we can't just plan one area for something. We need to look across the board and make sure that it can be used for other things. So recreation diversity is something that I really have been working on because these groups are coming to me and asking, whoa, this blank field, can I just use it? You know, they want to be here. They want their kids to be doing something. And then this day and age, especially now with COVID. with COVID, outdoor activities are fantastic to offer. So we want to be able to grow So that brings to an end sort of just my rundown of this. I mean, it's 190 something pages. So this, this document can't really, I mean, we don't have the time and I'm sure a lot of you all don't want me to go through every single part of this. So, but we, we have tried our, our best with this, the grant funding and then with the help to provide a document that can be, our, our number one goal is that it wouldn't sit and just stay on a shelf, but also can be given. And that's one of the reasons why Vista Design is working with us. And we were so interested in them is they, they've worked hand in hand with company, or with Texas Parks and Wildlife grants and stuff like that. Because at the, when we first started this project, we didn't know what funding we were going to receive for other projects. So we really wanted to make it so that we would be able to move forward with that. So a lot of the substance of this, the, some of the boring stuff, some of the data collection, that stuff is great for when we go to them because it shows that we have cast the net and got everything so that we can provide that.
For grant support.
Well.
Okay. I just wanted to make this statement. I made this statement to the Parks, or to the committee when I went and sat through one of the reviews. And I say one of, because I know there have been many, and there have been several since that meeting I was at. But just to publicly state, and I know the mayor probably has similar sentiments that he'd like to share, I just am very, very impressed. I've seen other parks plans, I've seen other efforts of the, of this caliber, and they've always cost two, three, four, 10 times. I mean, you've got a $24,000 report that I would easily say is, you know, would have cost 100 to 125,000 in any other community. And, and I think that's all thanks to the volunteers, the hours that were spent, the dedication and time that was spent pouring over the information. I know that it, it's not going to have everything that everybody wants to see in it because that's just, that's just the nature of what we do. We plan and then we revise our plans. But I'm just, I, I'm thrilled and proud of the group that did this. I think it's amazing. And I really, really think it speaks to the caliber of volunteerism and of community that exists in Castroville. It's just, it's one aspect and one example of that. I really appreciate it.
Great. Are we, did you want feedback on that now? Are we able to do that right now?
Yes, I believe talking it over, we, if there's anything, then, you know, just hearing the presentation or quick questions or, or whatever, if we can't answer it right away, I don't think we want to take too much time on this. I'll write it down and we get those back. Or you're welcome always to email those over to us. But our, our goal is to, you know, bring this to you, show you that, you know, it's here, it's, it's real and we want to use this and, you know, get some feedback.
And I know that, like Councilman Dyer's already sent out some questions about it. Let's spend the next five or 10 minutes just talking through it and then we'll continue to work through it and continue to refine it. So let's start with you, Councilman Dyer.
I think it's a great effort and I hope you won't misconstrue what I'm going to tell you. You asked for recommendations, so I'm going to give you some. I think it's a great, a great effort and I'd like to see it move to fruition. I think the biggest thing I noticed, I don't believe your report, as it's written right now, is focused on the objectives that the city council needs to put a capital improvement plan or multiple plans over many years in place. Because this is not going to be a cheap endeavor. It's going to cost a lot of money. And it's going to take a lot of years because parks don't always set a number one priority in, in the city. There's a lot of other competing things. So I'd like to see it to be a little more focused on helping us to build capital improvement plans that are time phased. That means you have to prioritize. Everything can't be number one. I mean, every, everything you want us to do should have a unique number, starting with one down to X. So maybe we'll only have enough money to do one, two, and three. And that's what we were looking for from you in terms of the objective. I think the authors should consider looking at a style manual. This is a very hard report to read. It's way too long. And I think there's some, lots of good style manuals that will help make the report more easy to read. The biggest issue for me is I'm looking for a 10 to 15 page report. I want to read, I, by the way, I read all 194 pages twice, twice. I'm not trying to say, I did read it and I do think it's great work. But I think you can make it a little more concise. And couple ideas to think about, use footnotes. Use append, you did use appendices and you used them very well. But if you use footnotes and appendices and try to take the information that's not germane to what we're trying to accomplish and put it in those and just leave the report with the meat in it, it'll help us stay focused because we're kind of old. You know, it's hard to stay focused when you start reading on something. You want to keep our attention on what, what it is you want us to do. So that would be a suggestion that might help you. If you took all the historical, the demographic discussion, you have a lot of nice pictures, you take all that kind of stuff, move it out of the report and put it in the appendices because it really doesn't help you make your point. It just informs the reader of information they may not be familiar with.
Can I, can I ask one question? You, you talked about having kind of just a short 15 page, something. They do, do provide an executive summary. What did you think about the executive?
I didn't think it contained enough information. It was 10 pages long, including the pictures.
In my recollection of the executive summary, I'll be honest, I studied, I didn't read it the second time that it was sent out, but the, I, I went through it, but I did not read every page, was that it had a lot of historical detail. It's more like an executive summary for someone who's not familiar with Castroville, which is appropriate in some respects. But it's not an executive summary in the, in the format that Councilman Dyer is referring to where it actually summarized the report and summarized the major action items of, of those report for a busy person like a council member to be able to just glance at and say, okay, these are the priorities. And this is the meat and substance of this report. I think it, it's almost mislabeled because it, and I think I kind of provided that feedback before. But just speaking to, in defense of the, the group that put this together, you know, some of this commentary, we had some very similar feedback. And we went back to the gentleman and he was like, yeah, um, no, I'm not making any of those changes. And he was, he did it politely and respectfully and professionally, but he said, look, I've already exhausted all of my time I had allocated for this project. I will make these changes. And he selected probably 10 or 20% of the ones that were put forward and they were all minor, very minor changes that he could do very quickly. So the meat and the substance, some of the big, the bigger changes, you're just asking a group of volunteers to do. And that, that was, I think, a big challenge.
I think it would help you if you, if you'd put on two hats. Put on a capital hat in one of your meetings and just focus on capital. What, what are the things we have to go by? What land, buildings, what do we have to get to fulfill the needs that we have today but we can't fulfill? So that's capital. And it takes a long time because you've got to put it into a plan. You've got to time phase it. But what's most important? Then take off your capital hat and put on your operations and maintenance hat. The budget every year, what is it going to cost us to do these improvements? And you've got a wealth of improvements laid out in this plan. And I hope I'm not going to offend all of my friends from District Five. It's a great plan. You've got a good list of things we need to do, but you're too focused on the regional park. Take the blinders off. Take them off and look at the whole city. There's lots of things that we don't have in the city and they don't all belong in the regional park. And they don't all belong in Lyons Park. They need to be spread out over the whole city. And we're going to have a city that half the people are going to live on the east side of the river pretty soon. And you guys are on the park, you guys, the regional park is on the far southwest side of the city, as far away from them as it can get. But they're still going to use it because it's a great facility. But we should, we should think about other things too. And I agree with you that we can, we can improve many things. We can build pocket parks. We can do lots of those things that you've suggested. But we have a 40-year-old pool. We need another pool. We need to be realistic. You talk about kids to do diving, kids who want to be in the Olympics. They're not going to be able to do it in that pool. I'm sorry. We can put, we can pour all our money in that pool. It's never going to be a pool that we can do an Olympic certified trial. We have to think about perhaps another pool.
If I can redirect just a little bit, I think that these, this is a great conversation that we should continue to have. I think that it is a separate conversation. I think that it's good advice overall. I would say that foundationally, and I'll say that specifically, this is a great foundation. What you put together, Councilman Dyer's suggestions, perfect for refining it, for developing it. You put a ton of work into it and I feel like what you've done is prepared us, given us the foundation to prepare for the future. And I would, I would state that what you've done in here actually does give us guidance for developers. It begins that guidance to say, this is what's going to be appropriate for different areas. As we continue to refine it, I think that it would be great, Councilman Dyer, you've got great ideas on these. And I think that it would be great to start diving in with them and maybe leaning in and helping them develop some of this stuff. But let's see this for what it is. It is a master plan. It is not a tactical, this is how we're going to implement everything. But it is, this is foundationally what we have. This is what standards say that we need. And it gives good direction for people going forward. And the reason behind, I, I know that the reason that the grant was provided in the first place is because they looked at it as an investment in the future. This was, this was seed money to put down $20,000 to be able to pull out of that additional grants and financing opportunities that would be available for it. So that's specifically why it was donated, so that, that the Parks Department could then take that, develop the master plan, go out for other grants and go out for other money. And so what you were talking about is a part of that. But that is, I think that these are tie-ons, add-ons. And I would love it if you would continue to dig in with them on, on perfecting it.
I'd just like to address the issues on five orders. If you look at all these budget sheets, they're listed the highest priority first in the first year. That is the priority. We have to do one thing out of all that stuff, get capital money. That's how those are ranked.
Is there a separate ranking or is it just?
It's by year and by, as you go down the list, that's, if you have to pick one thing, that's the number one thing. You do that, then you do that. Next one, next one, next one, across the years. So next year, what's the most important thing for Lyons? It's the most important thing for people, for the school. Also, the highest recommendation, number one recommendation of all of this is to acquire more land east of the river. We're sitting right now in a seller's market in East Bay. That's good and bad. It's bad for us if we have to buy land or acquire land because we're competing with it. It's good for us if developers come to us because we can raise the bar on the standards that they come out because they want to come here. And talking about access, public access, a lot of developers want to have high dollar homes with HOAs and parks. We're exclusive in favor of that. In the development process, you're going to work out some kind of deal where they're funding public access, you're going to have public access, some kind of credit for the other parks.
And I think that this is a great conversation to continue to have. People like yourself who's put a ton, a ton of time and effort into this. People like Councilman Dyer who really, I mean, he obviously cares about this stuff and is passionate about it, has some great ideas. And so I think that this is a conversation we absolutely need to continue. And through that, I think we'll actually.
All of the Councilmen, you can send all the questions together.
Just, and Councilman Dyer, I apologize. I, I do want to continue us moving on. Are you okay with that? Okay. So let's move on. Councilman King, any discussion on it?
I have no discussion on it because I haven't been able to work through it yet. So.
You've been busy on your house.
Have you been busy? What have you been doing over there, Phil? Another historic preservation on city property.
Building buildings.
On city property. And, but no, I do intend to, I've read parts of it, but I've not read it in depth. I mean, it's very complete report. And I'll just have to get back. I don't know if we can have a discussion, future of this, or you work, workshop, or I mean, you know.
Yeah, I think that it would be a great to, to get to that point where we're ready for a workshop. I think this would be a great, a great exercise to go through when we've actually got time to dig into it and figure out what we can find in all of that. Okay? Councilman Kerry?
I, I commend you on, on the report. I haven't been able to read the whole thing either. But I did give it a, a good peruse and then read in depth partially. The, I did see that the aquatic facility that is, is something I know that you're very, Patrick, you were very focused on, is in the, in the plan. And I'd like, love to see that come to fruition. No other questions. I, I would like to finish digesting it. But if, if anything comes up, I know you can contact.
Great. Thank you. Councilman Martinez?
Yeah, I've, I've read through it as much as I can. And I'm going through it again and again. It's a great detailed document. I love the detail of it. But let me finish going through it and writing up any questions that I may have. I do have one thing that we guys can put in your cap regarding September Square. It might, would it involve the Legion? Because we're the ones that help coordinate the memorial for the fall of war, military during battle. And we're already discussing fixing and updating the current memorials and then expanding it to include Desert Storm, Desert Shield, Operation Iraqi Freedom, and Operation Endoring Freedom. And so we're, we're working on that. So you might want to tap into the Legion.
Well, luckily, since you are the Parks Board liaison and a contributing member of the Legion, I think you could.
I'm the adjutant for the Legion too. But, you know, just that they bring, bring those parties in to help with that, with the memorials and everything there.
All right. And I have something on behalf of the Friends of the Castroville Regional Park. This is an outstanding service award. Is it okay if I present it to them? Will you do that with me? All right. I'm going to read it. So this is an outstanding service award presented to Patrick Connor for above and beyond efforts, dedication and determination that this Parks and Recreation Master Plan be the best it can be for the citizens of Castroville and beyond. Presented by the Friends of the Castroville Regional Park, January 25th, 2022. Great job, great effort.
Do y'all need a photo in front of that?
In front of the painting. There you go. Since I use that in their, in their presentation.
Thank you, Devin. I appreciate all the hard work that you guys have put into this. I look forward to continuing this on. All right. The next item is discussion and possible action on authorizing the city administrator to enter into a contract with EMC Strategies for Grant Administration Services.
And for that, Mayor, I'm recognizing Janice and Ernie Gonzalez are both here, the dynamic duo. For those of you attended the airport groundbreaking for the new USDA funded hangar, you'll recognize both of these folks as they were there early that morning to help us in that endeavor. And Ernie, in fact, was kind of the project lead on both identifying the USDA's possible funding, but then leading that, that entire effort through the, and it's not a small thing simply because there is a mountain of paperwork and there's just a lot of moving pieces you have to coordinate. And Ernie helped us through that process. So what we're going to talk about tonight is kind of expanding on that. So what we're going to talk about tonight is a late, kind of expanding on that relationship, uh, and utilizing them for grant administrative services, but also as advocates for the city and helping us in, uh, the kind of the strategic initiatives that the mayor mentioned earlier. You will see in the handout that they just gave you and in the presentation that I think I forwarded to you, Pleasanton has benefited, uh, quite a bit, and, uh, the mayor had talked to the mayor of Pleasanton, I believe, about their experience. Is that true? True statement? And so, uh, that's part of what kicked off this discussion. So with that, Janice, I guess I'll turn it over.
All right, great. Thank you so much for having us and, um, I get to meet the rest of the city council. I'm really excited about meeting all. I'm Janice Gonzalez. I am the owner and founder of EMC Strategy Group. We have been in business since January of 2015. Um, it is family owned business, um, women led, veteran led as well. Um, the EMC and EMC Strategy Group is, are, they're children's names, Ernie, Mitchell and Christina. So that's why it's about family to us. Just like every community that we've gone into, we actually treat them as family, as a, as our own community. We may be living in San Antonio, but the community is still a part of us. We are registered lobbyists through the Texas Secretary of State, Texas Ethic Commission and the US Congress. Um, we also do grant development services, business and economic development services, external affairs services, marketing and communications. So as the leadership for EMC, um, we do lobbying, economic development, retail studies, public private partnerships, business development, grant writing management, government at all levels, infrastructure projects, public safety, quality of life, transportation and healthcare. So we have very diverse. And I'm going to let Ernie speak a little bit more about our diversity. You want to go ahead?
Thank you, Janice. Uh, Mayor, Mayor Proton and distinguished members of the city council, Scott, thanks for having us here. Um, the client list that you'll see up there, it's also in your packet, as Janice mentioned, we have a diverse group of people that we work with and we've worked with. Uh, we've represented the cities of Pleasanton, City of Charlotte, Florisville, uh, Maverick County Hospital District, um, Fall Furios, San Diego, Freer and Eagle Pass, along with the City of Brownsville. And then you'll see that within our clientele, we've also serviced nonprofit organizations that are within the San Antonio metro area, and, uh, so we're very pleased about, um, the diversity in our clients. We provide tailored professional consulting services. And what that means is that as, uh, Councilmember Dyer mentioned, that we want to make sure that every priority that the council members have is addressed, uh, because that's, that's really important as we go out there and search for funding opportunities or partnership opportunities, that we're actually doing the things that are, that your constituents are sharing with you and things that you've committed to. So it's, and what we do for one community may not be the same for the other. Every community has a different need, and I wanted to make sure that you all knew that we do provide those tailored professional consulting services. Uh, some of those services may be to support your economic development. You know, when I heard the news about the city having a new economic development that was approved, I thought, wow, that's great. And I asked Scott, did you put that in your annual performance review? Because that is a major accomplishment for somebody who's been leading, uh, the staff for 12 months, and that rarely happens. So, um, supporting economic development is something that we do. We do that currently for the Florisville Economic Development Corporation and also for the Pleasanton Economic Development Corporation. And in Pleasanton, they've got a model that I think that you all are going to follow that's very similar, where it's the council that drives the economic development initiatives. The council appoints an economic development board, a chair. They've done the same thing over there, uh, but we work with two different models. We work with the type A, the type B EDCs. Uh, when it comes to selling the story of the community is very important when we're looking for funding opportunities, whether they're through the state or federal or private foundations. So we've got to market, we've got to sell the story of why do you need these things? And so sometimes we'll look at the, we'll create a sob story that maybe, you know, we took a hidden sales tax because of the pandemic, or maybe we had, uh, some reduction in, in jobs in the area. So we look, we try to look at where, uh, we can best sell the story. I can tell you this from knowing what I know already, is the city is growing at a very rapid rate. And so your infrastructure is going to be stretched very thin, just like it is now. And in order for you to have those capital improvement projects, you need to have the seed money to get that going. And, and, uh, Councilmember Dyer, as you mentioned, some of these capital improvement projects are going to be long term, so sometimes we phase out funding opportunity requests, whether they're through the state or federal government. Uh, outside investor relations is something that we've been very successful in two examples, and again, I'll highlight Pleasanton because we do a lot of work for them. Um, we were able to bring in a Starbucks which they never had, and that created 35 new full-time jobs. Uh, the other thing that we were able to do is bring in a public private partner from San Antonio to invest within the city, to join the city as a partner, uh, to help fund the city's first business center and incubator, uh, for the city. Uh, we also, again, work on grants development. There are some firms that only work on grants. Well, we're a very unique firm because we don't only work on grants, that's just one of the other things that we do. We also, uh, build that relationship. We handle the external affairs, which is the relationship building. And in your, in your packet, you'll see that both Janice's and my career highlights are listed there. Janice served as the Business and Economic Development Director for the largest chamber of commerce in any border city in the United States, in El Paso. And so she was very instrumental in forging relationships with the Department of Defense, defense contractors, private sector, working with government. Um, we both worked for the US Congress, not every, I actually have not come across a firm that's got, uh, an owner that worked for the United States Senate and a CEO of a company that did special projects and grants for a member of Congress, which is what I did. So we both had that opportunity to work in Washington DC to benefit the constituents in the states and districts that we worked in. Um, then when it comes to identifying funding support, you know, you've got all these needs and all these needs, you know, they cost money. You've got to find the low hanging fruit. So we work, again, getting information from the city council, working through the city administrator, challenging, challenging that information, and then go out there and search for those funding opportunities and find out if it's a zero match or if it's a 25% match. Obviously, we want to go after the zero match because then that's better for the constituency and it's better for the, for the city's bottom line. So we look for that funding, uh, we look through the funding requirements, we work through the application process, we work through a development plan, and then after the city is awarded a grant, then we help manage the grant. So we would work very closely with your finance department, with Leroy and Beck, to make sure that we're providing the financial information that the funding agency is required to receive or the grantees is required to provide to the grantor on a quarterly basis. And then handling that external affairs relationship. You know, during this USDA project that we worked on with, uh, with, um, David over at the airport, it got to the point where we got as far as we could with the USDA, then we had to do the lobbying part. We went to the Congress. We went to Congress and Tony Gonzalez, and we would do the same thing if we were working on the state project with your state representative, Andrew Mer, or your state Senator Roland Gutierrez. That's, that is the area where we can help support and become an extension of Scott's office and of the city council's office. Uh, so building those relationships and maintaining those key contacts with state and federal legislative delegations. Now, when it comes to the state and federal funding opportunities, some of the things that Janice mentioned before, and I've heard various discussions here tonight about transportation, you know, having that relationship with TexDOT, which is very, very key. Now, when you deal with your airport, I know that it's run almost as a separate entity, but at the airport, you're dealing with TexDOT Aviation and FFA and, uh, or FAA, I'm sorry.
Hopefully not the FFA too.
Yeah. So working with, uh, with, in transportation issues, sometimes it's just having a seat around the table. Going to a planning meeting when TexDOT is doing their regional planning, we want to make sure that, that Casterville is represented and their needs are addressed because you've got all this traffic coming between Del Rio and here. And so that is very important that we focus on the transportation, on the infrastructure. Again, your, your population here is just going to skyrocket. And so what are you going to do with that water and sewer infrastructure that you need to, to, to grow, to keep up with the demand? Not only that, you've got telecommunications infrastructure, Mayor. I know that you had spoken to the mayor of Pleasanton about the, about the AT&amp;T.
The cell phone service.
The cell phone service. I actually had a conference call thing with the counterpart that I have, the lobbyist for, for AT&amp;T about expanding telecommunications needs within the city. Small cells, micro cells, wireless towers, they confirmed that they had, or already had one. I said, yes, but I'll tell you right now, when I'm at City Hall, I got one bar, maybe two bars outside in the parking lot. You know, once we worked on that project in Pleasanton, you drive through Pleasanton, it's five bars and, uh, on your cell phone. So telecommunications infrastructure is very important in support of small business and economic development. Uh, on the economic development front, one of the things that we've already taken the initiative on is reaching out to the Texas Comptroller's Office to provide training opportunities for not only Scott, but anybody that's going to serve on the EDC board. Uh, and so they're willing to support that endeavor and making sure that the EDC knows all of the tools under the toolbox to support economic development is very key. And so we would and have supported economic development in, uh, other communities. Now, quality of life is important. Um, as Mayor, you stated during your opening remarks, or the mayor's remarks is, you know, that's one of the responsibilities of government is to provide a safe area where people can do things. That stuff costs money. So we want to focus on identifying the low hanging fruit, uh, funding opportunities through the state, federal government. The state has two grants that they give out every year, a $150,000 grant and a $750,000, uh, $750,000 grant through the Texas Parks and Wildlife. This year, because of the pandemic, there's an additional funding opportunity that's made available through the Economic Development Administration to support parks and recreation. So those are the type of funding opportunities that we would seek. And when it comes to public safety, when you have a safe community, people want to stay and they want to come into the city. Uh, I know that right now, there's at least five funding opportunities that the ACOG manages through the Governor's Office of Public Safety, which we could apply on behalf of the city to support the chief and the police department and his staff. Some of those grants have to do with manpower, some of them have to do with equipment. So I'm not going to go, I'm not going to go through all of the recent successes which are listed in a, in another slide, but I do want to focus on support of the CARES funding and the American Rescue Plan funding. So during the CARES funding, there was some money that was sent over to the city, so the city had to work with Leroy and Scott to make sure that they reconciled with TIDM, to making sure that every dollar was accounted for. Well, with the American Rescue Plan, there is, uh, a quarterly report that's due on April the 1st to basically state what you used all the money so far to date on the first round of funding that you received on August the 3rd of last summer. So this coming August the 3rd, there's going to be another round of funding. Now, if the communities are able to say and identify that they used 100% of that funding on the first round, then you can get the second round. Now, uh, Councilman Dyer, um, Dyer, this is an opportunity for you. You had mentioned about that library project, the hotspots. Well, that's a technology approved funding that the American Rescue Plan could be used on. You had mentioned that the first, you got this round covered. Well, the funding to the American Rescue Plan is good through 2024. So we could work on ways to identify additional funding sources to cover a project that is obviously very important to the community.
I want to just chime in real quick. So the order of, uh, how things will occur as far as that funding is, the first order of business, since we just issued this debt and we'll, we'll receive that in February, is in February to adopt a CIP. So you'll be presented with a draft CIP with a list of projects for the next 10 years. It'll have 10 years with the projects in it, but really it's going to be the next two that we'll really focus on because that's all we can fund, right? Is, is one year of projects, or two years of projects in general fund and one year of projects in the utility fund. So, uh, you will adopt a CIP and we'll discuss what goes in there and what your priorities are. Once that's done, then you'll have a general idea of what's funded and unfunded, and we can then talk, okay, we can maybe have a presentation from this group to come in and help us understand, okay, here's what our priorities are that are unfunded. Now, is there, can the ARPA money be used for any of these items? Or is there anything else out there in the community that, uh, because maybe perhaps we're going to, we're going to do future issuances of debt to pay for those other items, that we want to try and cover the ARPA? So just to, so you all know, uh, I have not forgotten about those things, but it is, there is a strategy to how I'm going to try to help cover our capital needs, and the ARPA funds play a role, but I want to make sure that we do that in a timely manner, and that'll be after we adopt the CIP.
And Mayor, I know that you had mentioned before, when we had a private discussion with Scott, um, the return on the investment, and I think that is obviously extremely important. We, as a firm, hold ourselves very accountable. At the end of the day, it's results oriented. What did you bring to the table? So I do want to highlight two bullet points here that are listed under our recent successes. So in Pleasanton, we applied for an Economic Development Administration grant to support a business center. So in that project, the city acquired a elementary school from the local school district. Now they have to figure out what are they going to do with it? So we came up with a strategy and a project and submitted our application, uh, got letters of support, had a community, uh, meeting, got the community to support the project. We had asked for a $3 million grant from the EDA. And so whenever you ask the government, whether it's the state or federal, for X amount of dollars, you've got to high bomb because they're going to meet you halfway. Well, here, in this particular case, they came in and offered the city a million dollars, not three. So then our responsibility was to, well, in order to make this project successful, we got to go find the remaining balance. And so we were able to do that. We contacted a development, uh, group out of San Antonio, and we were able to orchestrate the city's first public private partnership, which was going to make the difference and, and through their personal investments, coming in and helping to realize this project. The project is now underway, and, and now the project has grown from just, not just that one facility, not just that one school, but now an entire main street. So really excited about that one success. I know that when, uh, Scott and I talked about all of those major needs that are in that 194 page document, uh, we knew that, well, not, we can't cover everything through two parks grants that the Texas Parks and Wildlife, you know, puts out every year. We've got to identify a public private partner that can come in and invest, so using private dollars to support public initiatives. So that's one of the things that, you know, I would work, uh, with direction from the city council and Scott to, to bring as a funding opportunity. So, uh, as I wrap up, I want to highlight two, uh, or three important things. Because we are registered lobbyists, uh, we are very, um, we are responsible to report all of our activities through the Texas Ethics Commission and the United States Congress. We also maintain communication with our client. And Scott has verified this before, you know, he and I and Janice have a great working relationship. Communication is key in any relationship. In order for us to be successful, we have to know what the priorities are that the council has and have directed the city administrator to do. Once we have that communication going, then we can achieve a lot of success. It's a team effort. And so the last thing that I want to highlight is our experience, our benefits and next steps. So we do have proven success. You've spoken to, uh, another mayor, you've spoke, Scott, you've spoken to another city manager, um, we've worked with your city staff. Uh, it's been great working with Leroy, with David, with Beck, uh, city secretary as well, Scott. Um, we have experience in working in government at all levels. Janice and I have had the opportunity to work in city, state, county and federal government, in the executive, legislative and the judicial branch. Uh, we've just been fortunate, and we've turned our skill sets and our experience into what we do every day. Uh, the, the benefits to having a group like us is that we don't just do grants, we do the relationship, we do the external affairs, uh, we maintain the communication with the state and federal legislative delegation. And so the next step is we're asking that the city, uh, allow us to expand the services that we've been providing to the city. When the city contracted us through the airport, we were just at the airport. We'd like to be able to support all the functions of the city. Infrastructure, transportation, quality of life, public safety, economic development, and then doing, searching for those funding opportunities. economic development, and then doing, searching for those funding opportunities. So at this point, what I'd like to do is first, thank you on behalf of Janice and I, and open up the floor to any questions that you may have.
I want to clarify, just the agreement that put forward, what they're looking for is basically a monthly retainer and then 5% of any, basically, I know this is the wrong terminology, but a finder's fee, if you will, a commission on any grants they brought forward. And the Mayor and I had a pretty candid and frank conversation with Ernie about what we would set as the expectations for year one. And in year one, we're gonna go after $2 million. Try to find $2 million worth of grants or private development or what have you to support the city's various goals and objectives and major projects. And yeah, I think for me, there are a lot of other grant administrator, administrators out there. None of them offer the level of relationship building and lobbying type work that this group does. We have to be careful because they aren't lobbyists. We can't hire lobbyists now. That's a, it's not something to do. But we can certainly take into account the relationships they've built because I do know that success is still based on those relationships, that you would still have a greater opportunity if you can work with someone who's put the effort and the time in to build those relationships through state agencies and with other groups, elected officials, when you're out there, you know, looking for the same pot of money that everybody else is looking for. So I do think they add that value. And for me personally, one of the things that I think I'm very excited about is just being, having a special projects group that's an extension of me, so that when the mayor has harebrained ideas, as he refers to them, I have a group that I can say, hey, Ernie, the mayor has another idea. What do you think about this? And to his credit, you know, Ernie's already been a big help in that area as, as the Mayor and I have talked about various things like, you know, Veterans Affairs or a Veterans Incubator-type project or, and there's been other types of ideas that we've had. I know that we're gonna go visit a food banks. I can only imagine that the mayor's thinking about a food bank of some kind or supporting something here locally. So these are all types of efforts that I think would not be provided in a typical grant administrator-type relationship. They're gonna go, typical grant administrators would be go after the, you're gonna be one of 30 or 50 cities they represent and they're gonna be going after like the CDBG grants and basically the big ones. And they don't, they don't, they do care if you get it, but not really. They just want to make sure one of, one of their cities gets it. So they'll, they'll do a boilerplate presentation for all their cities, submit them all, and then roll the dice and see who gets it based on points and awards and stuff like that. I really do feel like Ernie and Janice bring something else to the table, but I'll just shut up now.
Well, and I, I'll preface this conversation with the fact that I am, I'm cautiously supportive of this. And I say that, and this is the same frank conversation that we had. I want to see proof of it. I believe that they can produce that. I think that we provide a short but adequate leash to make sure that we can actually do this. It sounds great. We just need to see it actually in action. When I look at your list of things that have been done, you're very good friends with Pleasanton and if you were that good friends with us, then we would love you to death. So that's why I feel like you can actually deliver on this. But we just need to make sure that we're basically not bankrolling you. And that's, no offense at all, we are responsible for the money that's here. And I think that if you look at overall with, with Scott's goal of $2 million for, that it works out to about 10%, which is about what it would be for having people manage something like this. If you could bring in more and you could make more, fully supportive of that, the more we can offer to the citizens of Castroville, I'm thrilled with, as long as we can hit those goals. So that's, that's where I stand with it. Let's start actually on this side.
Funding, where would this come from and do we have it?
Yeah, so, yes, so one, we would amend the budget. This is short answer and the short answer almost everything when we talk about funding. But where I see, since this is specifically, where their dollars are gonna, are gonna matter are on capital projects. So I view this as a capital expense, just like any other professional service that we go out and seek. And in the capital, the CIP project, there's, there's space, if you will, for grants. There are a lot of grants that are experiences I've had in the past and I've kind of plugged in those dollars amounts, not, not knowing whether it would be successful to get them or not, but having a grant administrator, that's how I pay for it. Because you'd be paying those dollars anyway. So if we went through a traditional route with a more traditional grant administrator, I would go out and look for some of those same grants and I would be paying fees and all those fees would be attributed to the CIP program. So that's where this would be, this would come out of as part of the CIP professional fees.
If I may, Councilman Martinez, to add to what Scott just said, there are some grants out there through the state or federal government where you can actually work in the professional consulting services. For example, the Texas Department of Emergency Management, whenever they put out their rounds of funding, there's an element of space where you could do that.
Yeah, I'm a retired Air Force medic. I ran emergency management operations. And I'm the emergency management operator for the city, along with the police chief. So, yep, know very well. But I'm just trying to make sure.
But that's where we line up the funds. Probably in, probably table, or probably put it in, under the guise of the CIP with the expectation that as they bring dollars in, those dollars should be utilized in some capital area or another. That would be identified in the CIP.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilor Carrick?
I know you have an answer for this, but as a government, this, this government is procluded from hiring lobbyists. How do you insulate the city from, from that relationship?
That's a great question. So during the discussion about the lobbying and local governments, a lot of people in my industry have moved to use the term external affairs. And so that's why, and that's exactly what we do. We do the same thing that some of the other, other levels of government, they have a government affairs person. That's exactly what we do. It's interesting that even in the state legislature or the state agencies, they have government affairs liaisons to work with cities, school districts, special districts, and counties. So we, when we're doing work on behalf of the city, we're not working on legislation. That's the key thing. Now, the city wanted us to have us do actual legislation, then that's lobbying. But when we're doing the relationship building, breaking down the barrier and working directly with the state agency or federal agency, that's not lobbying. That's not correcting any policy.
Just depends on which box you check.
That's exactly it. But that's a great question.
Yeah, thank you. That's all.
Councilor King?
No questions.
Councilor Dyer?
Are we allowed to talk about rates?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think this is a good initiative because our Economic Development Corporation is gonna need help in this first year. I mean, we're gonna start from scratch. And we've got some members that have experience, but as a body, we got, we're new. So I'm kind of in favor of this. I'm a little bit, it's expensive. I mean, $5,000 a month is not chicken feed, but I would be willing to sign up for a reasonable duration because we'll see if you can do what you say you think you can do. It looks to me like there's no question that if you have even a modicum of success that what you've discussed, you're gonna bring in enough money to easily cover the cost that we're gonna have to pay you, including the extra 5%. I just wanted to clarify one thing. The 5% that we would pay would be on grants and projects that get awarded to us, right?
Correct. You have to actually get the, yeah. Not, not applied or exactly, we actually have to receive.
I think, I generally support it for a reasonable amount of time and we see how, how it works. Because I'm on the Economic Development Corporation and I'm a little concerned because.
Well, two things, if I may.
Somebody to help me.
So two things, if I may. One of the things is, I, I've already included them on the invitation for the February meeting. They've already planned to come. So they'll be there. They've been on the email strings back and forth with the folks who are going to help guide that discussion that day. And the idea is that they'll, they will be the bridge that will build continuity for the board. Specific to your concern and the Mayor's statement as well about a reasonable amount of time, I believe that the current, the contract's been proposed, agreement's been proposed, has an evergreen clause in it. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So what we had submitted was a 24-month contract, but there's also an escape clause that if we fail to meet what we said we're gonna do, then the city can, you know, break the contract. And we had discussed about that, pretty, three to four month separation clause. And so we are willing to work with the city and also work towards those goals that are gonna be set forth that we discussed about, the dollar amount. Communication's gonna be very key. I will not stand here and lie to you and say that it's just gonna be great and we're gonna go out and do this and everything that we said's gonna happen. Because it won't happen if there's no communication. If there's communication, like Scott has maintained, and the Mayor is, is either directly contacting us or working through Scott, then we will be successful. Because it takes a team effort to make this happen.
So I'll need specific direction from the Council when you do make the motion as to, if you do want to make an adjustment to that contract, if you want to change the term or the evergreen clause or something like that. Because I know you and I had talked about that as well, so.
So this is really a 24-month contract as opposed to, but it does have a reason if you want, if, if the mayor decided he wanted to get out after 12, he would just have to tell him at the nine-month part, right?
That's what it sounds like, yeah.
And then if he said at the nine-month part, unless something changes in three months, we're terminating the contract, he could terminate the contract after 12 months. With no repercussions, no penalties.
That's the way I interpret that.
If that's what it is, I'm, I'm supportive of that.
I'm, honestly, I'm a lot more, I, I know that there's gonna take some time to get started up, but we don't have a ton of lead time. I think that if we look at doing a year-to-year contract, I'm much more comfortable with that, to give you a year or two to perform. And my hope is that you totally outperform. You do better, we do better. And again, I believe that you can do that. So my preference is to let it go for an entire year, not for nine months, for an entire year and, well, I guess.
Well, what he's saying is it would go for, we would pay for 12 months. You'd have to tell them in month nine if you tend to conclude the contract at month 12. That's what Councilman Dyer was referring to. The question is, the term is a 24-month contract. Are y'all comfortable with that? Knowing that you can really get out with three months' notice at any time and it's got an evergreen clause, are you comfortable with that? So I just.
We would have to fund it in the budget for two years. We'd have to.
Right.
Well.
Unless, unless they were gone after the first year and then it would be an on-aid or canceled.
But again, I see this.
If we're gonna award the contract now, the contract's 24 months, we have to, we have to put 24 months into the budget.
Just know that the budget's gonna be amended for all the capital project expenditures, expenditures that we adopt, when we adopt the CIP. So this would be viewed as one of those capital expenditures that would go into that formula.
So we haven't seen the contract, but for.
It's in the, it should be in your packet, right?
I kept reading, I didn't.
Yeah, it's in your packet.
Oh, there it is, okay. But for any reason, because you had mentioned something, if we don't hit goals.
Right.
But that's just, but for any reason, we can cancel the contract.
Not any reason. It's, if we fail to meet what we said we were gonna do, it's the items that are listed in the scope of services.
Otherwise, so that's why I say, I don't know if, you have to tell me if you're comfortable with the terms. I mean, if you, if that concerns you, then maybe you don't put the evergreen clause in and then you have a 24-month contract that you know you can kind of cancel, cancel with cause, with three months' notice or without, you know, if there is no cause, then you're locked in for 24 months.
How long do you believe that it would take you to actually perform on this? And by perform, I'm saying, call it even twice what your fees would be, including the, the administration fees and the monthly fees.
To honest, that honestly, we've been able to do that within 16 to 18 months where we actually work on a project because these projects take very long, as, as you know, the experience that we just had with USDA. And then from the time a agency receives notification that they were awarded a grant. If we apply for a grant in October, which is the deadline for the Texas Parks and Wildlife grants, those grants don't get awarded until April the first. So we submit the, we work on the application July, August, September, turn it in October, and then we don't find out till April 1 that we receive the grant. So these grants, they take a lot of work. It takes a lot of communication, coordination with the staff, making sure that, you know, we meet all the requirements and that we follow the, the steps that the state or the federal agency sets forth. So, you know, doing something in 12 months, it is a challenge because we may get notification on month 14. And so, you know, I just want to be very upfront with you and realistic in working, having worked, done this for 25 years, I just know how the system works on the bureaucratic side.
I think that right now, we're, my struggle with this is that we're taking all the risk here. And so I, I, again, I can't speak for Council. They, they'll have to make this decision. I would support us putting in some sort of, some sort of teeth in the game. Let's figure out what that looks like. Let's look at what exactly that performance is. But let's put it down by number. However you want to do that, I think that that's something you can work out with Scott and say, if we don't perform to this level and you've got the experience to be able to say, it may not be a dollar amount, but it should be some sort of impact. It doesn't have to be the, it could be awarded and not yet granted. So I think that we just need to make sure, again, we're responsible for money of the people that we represent. So I just want to make sure that, that we're not just, I, I don't believe you are like this. Otherwise, we wouldn't be talking right now. I believe that you can deliver on this. But there's a difference between believing and committing. And to me, committing, we've got to have some sort of commitment with some sort of quantification. So at the point of review, we can look at it and say, right now, we are successful. It should be numbers-driven, it should be some sort of commitment-driven. And I want to see some teeth in the game because we are, we are taking all of the risk here.
I would suggest that for that purpose, just based on some of the comments I've heard, what we may want to do is enter into a 24-month contract and take out the clause and view it review at 24 months. Because realistically, as you just heard Ernie say, to try, just, we may nail it on the park in the first six months. And we, we may be ready to say, you know what? We're good. We're gonna, we're gonna put this on an evergreen type of relationship because we're happy with the results that we're seeing and we just want those to continue. But, but no one in this room can promise that that will be the case. And 24 months is the realistic trial period, if you will, because, because of the timeframes that are involved in a lot of these grants.
I'm also interested in the, the fact that we can bring in some of the experience that we lack in the Economic Development Corporation. I think that'll be a great benefit to us, so I'm, I'm supportive.
One thing that I'm reading here regarding the small business retention and new entrepreneur support, we need to bring in the Chamber of Commerce because they do a lot of this on that, that's being said here, you know? Business development certificate, procurement, training opportunities. The Chamber of Commerce does that for our small businesses. So we don't want to step on their toes.
No, everything that we do will be in coordination with them.
Remember, Aaron's on our EDC too.
Right.
So we've got a, they've got a window into our operation.
But have they seen this though? Of what we're looking at?
No, this would be, no, this is, this is not stepping on, like, anything that we're doing here is not gonna step on their toes. We're not taking anything from the Chamber. This would be something that we would work with. It would be.
That's something that I would definitely coordinate with the Chamber of Commerce. If they want our assistance.
Yeah, I just don't want to blind the side of them.
And that's, that's one thing we're not gonna be like the wheel. The wheel's already been broken now. And so that's, we're just going to be an extension.
Yeah.
To help out the EDC and the Chamber of Commerce to collaborate with one another, to help out the community businesses.
Now, they're still looking for an executive director, is that correct?
Yes.
So if someone in your family needs an executive director. Great.
Can I address something that you just brought up? So, we, we believe in collaborative partnerships, because it makes us more successful. And, you know, in other communities that we represent, or have represented, the chamber has always been a partner. We work with the chamber, you know, because of Janice's former position, working with a chamber, she speaks chamber language, and I've been on chamber board, so we know that it's important to have that relationship. And when it comes to supporting small businesses, you know, I'll just give you an example of what we did this afternoon, was we reached out to the state director for the USDA. They have a program for micro lending for small businesses. So when I send the email requesting assistance for cities that, you know, that we do work with, I also happened to copy Michael Blair with the congressman's office, and immediately I get a response back from the state guy, and says, yes, absolutely, we're, want to do this. And so, you know, that relationship, supporting small business, supporting the community, all in a circle.
So when you say you'll assist, that means you will fill out the grants, and, or do you expect the city to fill those out, and you just assist in that? You all will be doing the legwork?
They will rely on us to provide them the information, and then they fill all of their work, which is the way I like it.
And, and what we're saying here, right, right now, because right, I guess, when you said, well, if we don't fulfill these things, but these are pretty loosey-goosey as far as what you're going to, so what we're saying is, we're talking about a two-year contract, we would authorize here tonight a two-year contract. And there would be no, there's nothing in here about giving 30 days' notice and cancellation and stuff like that, right? There's nothing in this contract that we've been submitted to us.
I believe there is a clause on there.
Well, and what I would suggest is, if you want to change that, we just need to modify that in our motion. And based on the comments I've heard, I would suggest we make this a two-year contract. And then, we need to make sure that you and I are communicating, and that we have that discussion six months prior, so in 18 months, we need to be coming back to council saying, hey, are you happy with what we've seen? Because I think that'll be plenty of time to be able to present.
And that is, that is extremely important for Janice and I.
Yeah.
Is maintaining that, that direct communication, relationship, concerns, priorities, shifting priorities. Nobody knew the pandemic was coming, and every mayor and city council and city administrator had to change focus. We did the same thing. We went from working on legislative stuff, to doing more support for our clients in the ground, in the trenches. So, yes, we will have that discussion, because I would like to say, Mayor Schroeder, can you talk to the mayor of Honda, or can you verify our professionalism? We want to, we're in a business to grow. We're not in a business to go under. So we want to expand our network, we want to build those relationships, so that you're able to verify the stuff that we're doing, just like, you know, the other clients that we've got. They're able to verify our professionalism. And, you know, that's, it's very important to us, is doing what we say we're going to do.
So what you're saying is, that the performance that you're talking about really couldn't be achieved unless, then, couldn't be committed to in less than two years, you wouldn't be comfortable with that?
Yeah, well, I'm not saying, I think we could see, so, speaking of performance, we're trying to aim for $2 million, an average of $2 million a year. That's what we're, that's really what we want to try and hit. We may hit that in six months. We may hit it in 18 months, we may hit 3.6, you know, anyway, I want to hit an average of $2 million a year. So if at 18 months, we brought in $3.5 million, I think that's going to be, we're all going to be happy. Right? But that's all going to be dependent on, how successful are we, how are we communicating, what are our needs, what is the city's willingness to participate in the grant process, in seeking out these funds, and that kind of stuff? So this will be an experiment, but I think it's one that, again, we've tried to vet as best we can. And I feel encouraged by looking at the other cities who have been working with them, as Ernie referenced, and the successes they've had. The fact of the matter is, the sky's the limit, we have a lot of opportunity here, that I think has low-hanging fruit for funding. The airport's one of those examples, I think there's all kinds of things at the airport that we might be able to be funding. Emergency management is another area, our policing, when we talk about needing more officers and that kind of thing, I know there's funding out there for that, in the millions of dollars potentially. So I have no, I'm not worried about being able to find the funding, but I couldn't predict for you right now, tonight, where, what form that's going to take, and exactly what's going to get funded, because a lot of that is going to depend on whether it's determined to be our priorities.
Then perhaps we support a two-year contract, not evergreen. I think that we should, we should analyze it after the two years, and I really would like the council at that point to have a very specific decision, not an automatic thing, but a very specific decision, and it's a great place for you to brag on all of the wonderful things that you've done, and all of the money that you brought in.
So maybe a two-year contract with an 18-month, at 18 months, we put in the contract that we'll, we'll be reviewing.
Yeah, because right now, the current agreement that's in front of us, there is no escape clause. All it says is this agreement commences as of 1 January between the City of Castroville and EMC, and will renew on 30 September 2023. There is no escape clause in the current verbiage.
We can modify that.
I think that we need to take a look at that. Part of this, to me, is that the best indicator of future performance is past performance, and they do have past performance, they have provable results. They have helped us, I believe that they could help, could have helped us even more if we would have engaged them further. And so I think that it would be wise, I think it would be prudent for us to do that. And if, if you're comfortable with two years, financially committing to that, and if you're comfortable with delivering to the citizens of Castroville within that timeframe, I think it can be a very long and lucrative relationship for the City of Castroville and for you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do we have a motion on this?
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I'd like to move that we authorize the city administrator to enter into a contract with EMC, strategies for grant administration services.
And external affairs.
And, and, and external affairs.
Well, I'm just going to add, under the terms that have been discussed, I'll add those to that, and that's specific with that 18-month performance review, and making it a two-year contract with no.
So moved, yes.
Great. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Mayor, thank you very much, Mayor Fortin, councilmembers, thank you very much.
All right, appreciate it.
Ernie, thanks.
Nice to meet you.
We're going to put you to work tomorrow. Get ready.
We're going to put you to work yesterday.
Go get your overalls.
Already, already sending out a text message.
Thank you. Thank you, Janice. All right, you guys have a very nice, thanks for hanging around for this. All right, next item, discussion and appropriate action on adopting an ordinance calling the May 7, 2022, got the right year, general election for the positions of District 3, 4, and 5 to serve a two-year term.
The ordinance is written.
Timestamp.
Well, and I just want to let y'all know. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
On this ordinance, I do, I am waiting for a call back from the election office to make sure the times, the dates in there is correct, I'm just not sure what of the day as far as the time-wise, because there'll be a couple of days in there, there's going to be 12 our days. But before we finalize it, when you sign it, I'll have it included.
Okay. But the election day is correct.
Yes. Election day and the early voting is correct in there, I just don't have the times yet.
Great. And Councilman Dyer, you said?
I motion we approve the ordinance as written.
I second that motion.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, we call the election, yeah?
Yay! We're going to have an election.
Do we have a five-minute recess?
Absolutely, we're going to take a five-minute recess at 7:12.
That's perfect, I need to get a charging cable for my phone.
I'm going to curse you for liking your floats, because I've eaten you the entire thing.
Philly, have you put your application in yet?
Oh, I don't have to yet.
The earlier, the better.
Oh.
Because.
Deborah and I have.
If anyone else is on the fence thinking about it.
I know, I'm planning to run, but I mean, there's no big, I mean, no, I'm not, I'm planning to. Yeah, I'm planning to run.
You're hoping someone else comes first, is that what you're saying?
They were, if I am needed, I will be here. It's, who is it, Gina, I, and?
No, it's 3, 4, and 5.
Todd.
I got to do this last year, so.
That's right.
I think.
Yeah, it was just a tough campaign.
Geez, girl, you're getting more glorious than.
We've got 57 minutes left, so.
What's your, what's your due date? Oh, my goodness, okay. It's not that far off. It's not that far off. And it could happen. You're thinking February 14.
Well, if you do February 20, that's my anniversary. If you do March 6, that's my husband's birthday.
Trish Marquette, I don't know if you've met her, she was the archaeological graduate student who was supposed to be defending her PhD here on the February 7. But she's planning to come down here to install this place in this dog truck cabin that we're finishing up building. But she's probably looks just like you, because she is due just about the same time. And she, she said if I'm going to do this, I have to do it, like, before the middle of February.
Like, mid-February, yeah.
Yeah, I can see with that, I can imagine.
So if she comes here, I'll, have you met her before? No?
Oh, I went out there today. I was going back, wow.
We'll give you a beer, no problem.
They didn't offer me one. They told me leave.
Bradford the other day was, was hammering some, something, there were square nails that we, you know, pulled out, and so he was hammering in one area, because we have to use new wood, and we're told, right, but one area he wanted to put one of the existing roof boards with the square nails. And, but when you think about, well, it's kind of, you know, cutesy that we're doing that, but, but in reality, the last time someone hammered that nail in that wood was in the 1870s. So, I mean, it's kind of a, you know, it's, it's kind of an honor, kind of wrap your mind around that.
Yeah.
So.
Sure, did you take a photo that day?
We did, no, we took a, in fact, took a photo of me handing him the square nail, so it was kind of like, someone, in fact, someone, Bradford's putting a lot of this on Facebook.
I was going to say, it's a historical thing, it's a history lesson, somebody in, like, the 22nd century or whatever it is.
Well, and we'll, we're going to document this.
I'm not sure you'll still be here, so.
Probably, yeah. We're talking about putting the roof on, and someone asked me, they will. See, the roof's good for it.
I think we need to go over and kind of plug some things.
No water here?
In City Hall.
Did you have to plug some things?
All I did was. Only the. Did anybody get high on it? The light wasn't on.
I was going to ask Scott.
Sometimes I pull, just I put it back.
No, nobody, I didn't. I didn't do any of that, all I did was mess it up, because that light right there was not on.
Yeah.
And then I unplugged the, or I plugged the end of the.
I kept thinking it was. But anyway, if I unplug that, sometimes it draws a.
Herb just mentioned the water's off.
Get water there? Over there, the sink and the toilet don't, nothing comes out on the other side.
It was working, Mayor, what'd you do to it?
I don't know.
Uh-oh.
Our company we just hired was.
I'll just, yeah, I know, I'll tell you, that's what my dad always says, what'd you do to it?
You're a good man.
It was working before.
That's, that's not good.
All right, we're going to reconvene now at 7:17? All right, next item is discussion and possible action to approve a change order in the amount of $45,908.16 with Rock and Q Construction for the Alsatian Oaks Waterline Project.
So, you have my report on it. I want to clarify, there's some things that weren't in the report that I just want to clarify. So what, the situation was, the, when we, when you all decided to award that contract, the winning bidder had 60 days to sign that contract. On day 59, they still had not signed the contract. We reached out to them and said, look, you know, we're ready to move forward, and they said, well, we have an issue. Our pipe pricing has gone up, and not only that, but the lead time is, is a year, or right at, really close to a year. So we need a change order. And we don't want to sign the contract, and we have a change order. And so we had a little bit of back and forth between, no, change orders follow the contract, you get a sign first, and then you get the change order. We also did our due diligence to reach out to the number two, so this is, the increase is about $45,000. The difference in pricing between the low bidder and the next bidder was about $45,000. We reached out to number two and said, hey, you know, just out of curiosity, would you still be willing to meet your bid that you proposed to us? You weren't the winning bid, but, you know, if we had to come to you, could you do that? And they said, no, no, we, we knocked on that bit. So, we had a firm fixed-price contract in hand that we awarded, and basically, the contractor was at the point, I mean, he's, I'll tell you this, I mean, he has a very good reputation, honorable, honest person that does good work, we verified all of that, we re-verified that during this process. It is what it is. We were stuck with a situation where we've got to get a water line done, or else, we, hey, y'all be quiet, kind of, trying to hold a meeting up here. We had a firm fixed price contract, unfortunately, we're, we've got to deliver this water line for Alsatian Oaks, or we're dead in the water. So even if we award the contract, his supplier, and that's not just his, I mean, suppliers in general, we can't get the pipe we need from his supplier or any other in the timeframe we need. So what we're doing is changing the type of pipe, and that's been our respec engineer, engineering partners have verified that this pipe will be acceptable, and it's something that'll work. But that's where we're at. So my question is, for you all, is not just, and I'll be honest, this is 3%, so it's well within the margin of a contingency, if you would, generally contingencies are in at least 5% to 10% on any project. So I'm very comfortable with, with the change order. My concern is, and honestly, I wasn't planning on bringing it to you, because I feel like even though it's, the dollar price is more than what I can approve, for, for a capital project, looking at contingency, that this would be, it's just kind of, it is what it is, we've got them before the project. So I've more or less told them, we're going to, we're going to approve this, but I need to know, number one, I want official action to prove it, and two, how do you want to handle change orders in the future? Because I know that time is going to be the essence, we've got to be able to say yes or no quickly, so that they can get things on order quickly, so that we can get in line quickly, so we can get our stuff as soon as possible, right? And I fully anticipate, after a conversation with Herb Dyer, I totally couldn't agree more with some of the things, his sentiment and things that he shared, this is going to be par for the course, and we need to be planning for it. And it is something that, you know, I'll be honest, in my career, I have not faced, I've certainly done, I've done, I was starting to count after I talked to Councilman Dyer, I have planned more than a billion dollars' worth of projects. I have personally administered more than $500 million in projects, where I, I actually did the purchasing, and we put projects together, whether it was building buildings, or putting water and sewer in the ground, or buying capital assets or what have you. So I've done a lot of this, I have never been in a scenario like we're in right now. I'm used to doing change orders, that's not, there's, that's, nothing new there, but, and so, and that, a lot of that has to do with engineering on the front end, you really got to make sure we're doing that, I think we're really being diligent about that. But to be in this type of scenario where our supply chain is so fouled up, that's new for a lot of folks. And the fact of the matter is, when you get a firm-priced fixed bid right now, the, we're going to end up paying through the nose, if we insist on firm-priced fixed bids. We're going to have to be a little bit more flexible, because the suppliers, and this is in your packet, you saw on the supply sheets that I, I included those on purpose, if you read that quote, right there on the quote, it says, this price isn't any good, basically. It says, here's your price, but you're going to pay whatever we paid when we take delivery. So even though we're making this change order now, the fact of the matter is, our gentleman that's doing the project for us, is going to pay whatever that amount comes due, whenever he receives the pipe. And if it has gone up 10 times, then we're going to be in a, we're, it's going to be a whole other situation.
Typically, with, with manufacturers, you pay at the time that you actually order it, they said at that time, not.
But they're not, right now. I got to get right here, but they're not. Yeah, and it's fuzzy, we got to get. Yeah, well, but they're, I think we need more voice. Yeah, well, but they're, I think we need more noise. So, yeah, I, that's what I'm saying, that quote typically, you're right, typically, I mean, I, I worked as a, as a global product manager, I mean, I'm very familiar with JIT pricing and how that works, and I was, I worked for distributors as well, and manufacturers reps, so I'm not seeing that side of it, and, and I've prepared, again, hundreds of millions of dollars of quotes doing that stuff. But this, what we're living through right now is very different, I've never seen people quote pricing like they are right now, which is basically what I just said, they're not giving us.
Good today, but it's not good tomorrow.
It's not, yeah, and it's not good on the day you order it, it's good on the day they deliver it. And it's true value, you know, with the same stuff, I mean.
The wood prices have skyrocketed again. A sheet of three-quarter inch plywood, regular CDX, is backed up to seventy-five dollars a sheet. A regular white wood, two by four by eight, regular white wood, is at nine ninety-nine a board.
This is a national security, and I really think our federal partner should drop the ball. Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Um, it, but, if anything, if we could have a, like a text message or sent out about it or something, because when I first got on city council, was when we had the big change up in personnel and everything, and they shut, they, they closed down one of the wells, and somebody lower in the food chain gave the okay for approval of us. It was a good chunk of change, that nobody on city council knew about it, and then when the bill came due, we're like, oh, wait a minute, who approved this?
May I ask you this, I think Councilman Dyer had a proposal that I really could get behind, and that is, as we do this capital project plan, the CIP, and we take on future capital projects, what I think we need to do is have a contingency fund for those projects that we all agree is, is sufficient, and it may need to be more than what I've seen, which is that five to ten percent range. We may, we say, you know what?
Should be confidential. City council, and the only people who should know what that fund is, is those of us that are elected officials and city officers. It should not be public, but it's something, we, I think we have all come to the realization that the inflation rate is not transitory, it's gonna go up for another two, three, four years. We have to take proactive steps to protect ourselves, and I think, I, I support the request for the money, I don't think that it could be done any other way. This project is crucial. If these water lines are not installed, we can't meet the schedule for Alsatian Oaks. It's absolutely essential. If we, we wait another week, those numbers won't be any good either.
Yeah. Right. Well, that's another reason why, I, I just reassured him, we're gonna be okay, we'll, we'll do this change order, but we need to be, have a clear understanding of what our expectations are for this contract, and we can't, this will, this can't be par for the course for this contract. You need, as a supplier, to be able to tell us, this is the price. But I'll be honest, just looking at the quotes that he sent over, I was like, well, jeez, how can you even do that? Because the way they're getting quoted is, is kind of ridiculous. So, the, my thought is, the way this would function is, we as a council would set up, or as a group, we would set up this, this contingency, we'd agree upon what the appropriate amount is, and we might do that in executive session, as Herb has indicated. So we do that in the February, the second February meeting. And then you would authorize me to, whatever that, whatever percentage you're comfortable with is, here's the percentage that you can agree to, right? And then I would bring reports after the fact and let you know, hey, look, this is where we are on the projects, here's where our total cost was, here are the contingencies that have been utilized so far, and that kind of thing. Typically, like I said, most projects in the past, when in an environment that's not like this, I'll have a set contingency amount, and it's, and that's what we look for when we get approval of the project. We say, we're approving not to exceed this amount, which includes a certain amount of contingency.
Of course.
And, and then I'm authorized to approve up to that contingency, and, and things go gravy, it's not a problem. Usually, we, we come in well under budget. This will be, like I said, this will be a learning experience for, I think, everybody, not just me, but suppliers, engineers, all, there's no one that I know that's lived through a time like this. So.
Great, so on this item, I think that's good moving forward, I think that's a solid strategy. On this item, do I have a motion?
I would like to make, make a motion that city council approve the change order in the amount of forty-five thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and sixteen cents for the Alsatian Oaks Waterline Project.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
I recommend that we ask the council member to make a modification to his motion to authorize the city administrator to develop a plan for contingency and come back to us separately about that.
I, I can do that separate from the motion, that's, that's okay.
Can you do it without a?
Yeah, because this, on this item, we'll do that, I'll do that.
We couldn't do that anyway because it wasn't in the agenda.
That'll be under future agenda items, yes.
Perfect, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion passes. Thanks for working these challenging times, Scott. Next item, discussion at, sorry, seven twenty-nine, discussion and appropriate action on the purchase of speed monitor equipment for the Castroville Police Department.
Brian is super excited that we're filing on this item. We're not talking about parts for thirty-eight minutes, is that what's going on? So we're relaxed up here. Bird watching.
So, I'm gonna just introduce the topic. We had this discussion on January eleventh. Two days later, I had a plan from the, from the police department on, they had already started looking at monitor, traffic monitoring systems. The system that's been proposed for you is specific, there's a lot of, I want you to know, there's a lot of options out there, a ton, a lot of different manufacturers, a lot of different pricing. This is one of the cheapest pricings for, for what it does. There's, it can go up to, jeez, you know, eighty or ninety thousand dollars if you really want to spend all that money. But out of all the options that are available, this is one of the few that had a built-in analytics software that met kind of the requirements that the mayor was really anxious about when, when y'all talked about this in open session. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Archie.
Okay, the, the other thing is, as we were looking at these units, and the ones that did have the analytics on them, a lot of them have where you have to pay a price fifteen hundred dollars a year for the software updates. I was talking to sergeant from Hondo today in the company they went with, they've had a lot of turmoil over there, but nobody's paid the bill, so they can't, they can't program the thing for speeds, so they can't use their, it's sitting in the storage back there, and they can't use it. I went with the, the Stalker, SAM R, and Stalker are the radios, are the radar systems that we use in all our patrol cars, we've been using them for fifteen years, handheld along with the mobile units. They're a good product, we've never had issue with them, they're based right out of Texas here, so anytime we need parts or get something fixed, they're pretty quick about that. Also, they're the guys that come down and service and certify our radars every year, so this would also get certified. We wouldn't have to have a separate company come out to do that, be part of when they come to do the rest of the PD, so it kind of, it doesn't kind of, it just makes it a lot easier for everybody. The only difference between this unit and the, the Stalker SAM is, if you look at, did he give you any pictures of this stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If you look at the, the speed, the numbers at the top, that board flips. So if I've got a officer who's not very good at pulling trailers, and he pulls to the left side of the road, but he should have been on the right side of the road, he can just flip that board and we don't have to worry about him wrecking the trailer, trying to get on the right side of the road, which I thought was a good option. The analytics on this thing is through the roof. It will do, it's, it's got six or seven programs already put in it, but you can do up to twenty-four that they have in here, and you can custom your programs. This is gonna save me a lot of man time right here. For example, the, uh, I can't remember his name, the Trump guy over there by Gary Queen was, was complaining about the school zone over there. And Fred and I sat out there for three different days, and we did it two years in a row because the first year was COVID. So, the first year we, we had different numbers from the second year. I can set this thing up and just turn it loose, you know, put it on twenty miles an hour, let it know it's a school zone, and it's recording all that for us, and it'll tell us what we need over there. I think it's gonna be a great tool.
We had talked, there's, there's another item that was in the quote, I'm talking cheap sense, and I didn't understand it kind of the first time, because I'm slow, but the second time you said it, I got it. We, I was looking at a passive device that could be pole mounted, that does not have any display to it, it's a little bit cheaper, and the idea there is that you could go move that around the town, and see where you have your speed problems and that kind of stuff, and versus this, which is really supposed to be a traffic calming device, but what he, what he was telling me is, look, I'd rather have two of these than, than have this and one of the, the other, because this does everything the other thing does. And by the way, the people who speed, probably gonna slow down even.
No, they're not, they know what these are.
So they're gonna get similar data.
So just, just so you know, Mayor, Officer Crossy watched the, the last meeting we had, and he wrote all the names of the streets down. He went off the next day and asked if he could take a undercover unit just to see what was going on, and he wrote twelve tickets on Constantinople that night.
Constantinople.
Constantinople.
Went past that building you guys were working on.
He said he didn't have luck on the other streets, but he, of course, he didn't sit there a long time, he said after twelve tickets, I had to move, so, gee, I said, that's good.
The twelve tickets that he got, were they in town, or they out of town?
Oh, I didn't ask, I, I can, if you want, I can pull them.
No, I was just curious.
Can tell you, I'm sure, well, one of them was an employee's daughter, I know that who works here.
I don't know who you're talking about.
Uh, yeah, I said, way to go.
What, what are you proposing to purchase? How many of what?
Were there different quotes here?
Yeah, there's four. Yeah, there's three of them. One of them is the SAM R, which doesn't have the ability to flip the sign.
Okay.
I'd rather pay.
There's a SAM and SAM R. SAM R has the.
SAM R, yeah, I'd rather have the ability to flip that, just, it, it'll save, it'll save me a trailer and a truck probably somewhere down the road. We're getting one here that we didn't, are nervous about pulling these things.
That's this quote, this is the SAM R.
How much was it, like nine something?
Nine thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars.
Yeah, and, so basically, it's about six hundred dollars more for the flipping of the sign.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. But I think the safety value is worth the six hundred dollars myself.
Sure, the accident value.
Yes, sir.
Far exceeds that. Well, let's talk about, so the passive device is two thousand dollars, right?
It's two thousand bucks, but somebody's got to go out and fasten it to a pole correctly, which that means that it's gonna be the chief doing it, because I don't trust anybody else with two thousand dollars. And you got to make sure you got it aimed right and all that good stuff. I've been doing this twenty-eight years, I've been dealing with these for twenty years, and I've watched people, they, they laugh at them, they'll just, you're gonna get correct information from this, but I can, if I had two of these, I can put them in two different places in the city at one time, if I have two of the other ones, you know, one doesn't slow people down, only, only this one does. So, I just don't think it's worth the money for the analytics.
Because you're gonna get the analytics either way.
You're gonna get them either way.
And I like the idea that you can put them in a school zone, move around, move them around from school to school.
Oh, first thing I would do is put this on.
Still have another one that you're putting out.
We get complaints if we, if we get them, I mean, that's, that's up to y'all.
So that's why I put that range of pricing, this funding would be from our fund balance reserves, and we do have three or four million dollars in fund balance reserves, so that's where that money can come from. And who knows, there might be a way to refund ourselves with ARPA, that, that could be a possibility too, but it'd be, so the, the approval amount would be an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars, because that's, it's roughly ten thousand apiece. The, he did say, when I talked to the vendor, he did say that he was just gonna estimate the delivery, the delivery will actually be a little cheaper if you order two, it won't be quite as much as.
It'd be under a thousand then.
I still believe that we would get results out of the passive unit, but you've been doing this a lot longer than I have.
It's your money, sir, whatever you want to do, I'll do.
I still don't understand the passive unit, I know.
A passive unit is just a black box that you screw to a pole somewhere.
Yeah, it doesn't have the sign.
Display, they don't know what it is.
The idea is, that would be a way to collect data without, and this is my thought was, and again, I respect the chief and his, and his experience, my thought was, when you see that sign that's telling you your speed, a lot of people, there are a number of people who will react to that, and so you won't get true data, you'll, you, when you're collecting it. But you will get a true response, because it will be a traffic calming. So you put that box up there, you know, Deborah and I aren't gonna see that box, and we're gonna keep going whatever speed we're going.
See, here's where I disagree with that.
Right.
They're gonna see me screwing that to the pole, and before I get back in my unit, Castroville will know, the chief screwed the box over here on.
That's very possible.
Well, it's not possible, that's what'll happen, I'm telling you.
Well, I'm better with Castroville finding that out than San Antonio finding that out.
Yeah, but then you're not gonna get your correct.
Right, but I do, so I, again, I defer to your experience.
So I, I say, if you're gonna do this.
This has an influence on the driver at the moment, because not only are you seeing your speed, but the guy behind you is seeing your speed, and he probably knows who you are.
Right.
But if we're, if we're actively putting these things around town, do we need two of them, can we just use one to see how it's working?
We can do one, yeah.
Because it sounds like there's not.
It's whatever y'all want to do.
Right.
Yeah, you don't get a big discount for buying.
No, but.
No.
Your future growth, well, they're gonna go up in price, though, I guarantee you, these are a new unit out, and they're selling them cheap, yeah.
So the problem is that you've got to leave it in place for multiple weeks for it to be effective, and we've got so many traffic issues, and we all, I think, have people calling us on a daily basis, wanting speed bumps, wanting stop signs. This, I think, will give us something effective, and it's something that the chief doesn't have to do. When we do a traffic study, that's.
We put, we put this thing out there and do the traffic study.
Well, if we don't do the traffic study with this, then it's you sitting out there, taking up your time.
With a light R hitting every car, counting cars.
Exactly.
Doing that for several days.
So this, I think, is the cheapest traffic officer that we can get, I support too. I still think we should do the passive, but he doesn't, so I would listen to him before you listen to me, but I think that we should do that.
I, I've seen the passive that they use on the base, and that lasts for a half minute, and the base is like, yeah, it, it doesn't work, so they switched over to the Stalker stuff, oh, they drop speed like that, and it, it works.
Some will and some won't, you know, it's just.
To me, the benefit of having the intelligence is you can look at what times people are, are speeding. I think the biggest deterrent is an officer sitting out on Constantinople and writing twelve tickets. To me, the biggest thing is to find out when it's happening, where it's happening, get an officer there, get some tickets out there, and people learn through pain.
But is this really a good accurate way to, to see traffic patterns? Because when people see it, they're gonna slow down, don't they?
Some do, some don't. A lot of them, they don't care.
Did you turn it where it looks like it's off, but it's still recording?
I didn't, I didn't ask about that, I didn't read that anywhere in here.
Put a plastic bag over.
Well, that's why you would use the pass, the passive one. The passive one is two thousand dollars.
Well, I really, but I guess I would, I'd see, to me, they're two different things. I would use the passive one, because I don't know if a lot of people would know what the box meant anyway, but that was just to, to, to see traffic patterns.
Well, here's what I do, if you do the passive, I would get Public Works to put that thing up and put it down, because, instead of us, because I'm telling you, I'm telling you, in Castroville, they're gonna know what that box is real quick, and it's, it's not gonna be as effective, so if you want to go with, with one, one and one to start with and see how they work, compare them, or, here's the, here's gonna be the problem with, with just the one, is I get calls for this all the time, and it's gonna be utilized. So when that second complaint comes out, I don't have another unit to put out there, this one's got to run its course. So it's, it's stuck for the week here.
And, and our complaining citizens will see it and go, oh, we're doing something.
Right. It's also just not, it's a small investment in my mind, that's the reason, ten grand for, for piece of equipment like this, it's pretty damn cheap.
Yeah.
Well, and I think they should both be utilized a hundred percent of the time. They should never be, I mean, they should always be out there, so not waiting for someone.
They need to charge, right?
Yeah, in other words, they, these.
Are these gas power?
Well, they're solar powered, so.
Yeah, well, they can run off of solar, but your, your batteries got to be hit up at some point.
Well, it mentioned that they're solar, solar powered, so.
Yeah, I think they can run, what, eighteen days, just off the battery.
I make a motion that we, I mean, I, I, I don't want to make a motion now, but, because I don't know which, which one it is, but I think we should buy two of them also, the active ones, and.
Two of the SAM Rs, the ones that the chief is recommending?
And, but even, there's three prices for the SAM Rs, right?
No.
No, this is the, I apologize, this is the quote you should be looking at, the first quote in the deal, two oh five eight seven two one, that's the one you should be looking at.
Say that price again?
It's the first quote, and the quote number is two oh five eight seven two one, the amount is nine thousand four hundred ninety, or, I'm sorry, ten thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars.
In your books, it's the last one, yeah.
It's your page two forty-one in your, in your packet.
Oh, it's.
Yes.
Oh, two forty-one, right here. Well, I think, this is two forty-one.
The amount's ten thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars.
This is the passive one. Oh, another one.
Yeah, it's the very last page.
Yeah, there's, there's two Sams in there, one's a SAM R, it's the cheaper one, and One's a SAM R, it's the cheaper one, and then the SAM R's is expensive.
No, no, it's in a different order.
Yeah.
You said SAM R twice too.
This is, he's telling me this is two forty-one.
It's your fault, you can't, that's my bedtime.
So, it's a, it's a ten thousand five hundred.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a stalker SAM and a stalker SAM R. The stalker SAM R is the model that has the flipping faceplate on it.
Well, one of these final price is eight eight two five. One of these final price is ten five nine five.
That's it.
Ten five nine five is.
And one of these prices, nine five nine five.
Yeah, I think the nine five nine five.
Yeah.
Is the, is the two stalker Rs. With the rotatable speed sign is.
It'll say SAM R on the deal.
Yeah, that's the nine radar, and then there's a second stalker radar. The, the stalker R is the nine five nine five.
With the rotatable sign.
With the retotle, the retotle.
Okay, that's the one we want.
So, it's the nine five nine five.
So, we just need to say not. Not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
That one.
Buy two of them.
Well, but just curiosity, what is the ten thousand five nine five? How is it different than?
I don't know what that is. I don't have that one. That must've been a quote they sent him, 'cause we both got quotes.
I will tell you, I'll, I'll tell you what I think it is. 'Cause one is byboard. You see it, nine five nine five, it says break quote good, and it says byboard number six oh eight dash twenty, and the other one is not a byboard quote.
Oh.
Okay.
Oh, no, it does, never mind, I lied. It says byboard two.
I'm trying to see, where's the difference?
Oh, yeah, the other one is a SAM trailer with top display. This is a SAM R trailer, rotatable with speed sign. So.
That's the one we want.
But why is it that that one is more expensive? The one, the SAM trailer with top display is more expensive than the one that you want?
You would think the rotatable sock, speed sign would be more expensive.
What if that had eleven hundred shipping changes?
They both do. They both do.
Okay, they both do.
They both do. I confirm it.
That's why we were ignoring you, Arnie.
That's eleven hundred.
Well, I didn't bring my SAM R. All I brought was the SAM.
If you look, if you look at the pictures of them.
Yeah, that's the only one. Rotatable with speed.
Oh, it's taller? I don't know. All right, but this is the one we want.
Yeah.
So, it's, so again, back to my original comment, about ten thousand dollars. If you say, you know, buy two of them for not, a price not to exceed twenty, then we can do that. And the funding source would be.
Well, and the only reason, if, if, if the other one get owned away.
Yeah, that's not it.
If you look at your pictures though, there's one that's tall.
Yes.
It's the only one that's.
I haven't, I haven't ever seen her.
And we're talking about the tall one.
So, if the nine five nine five.
Only one of them is an R, that's correct.
Okay. I make a motion that we authorize and say the purchase two SAM R trailers designated by quote number two zero five eight seven two two for a price not to exceed.
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand dollars.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
For the record, I voted two, but it just goes out. My vote doesn't count.
Vote all you want.
All right, next item is discussion on creating a convention and visitor bureau board. And you didn't have anything on this. This was solely mine, right? Okay. So, we've talked about this already, and I really wanna get your direction on, is this something that you support, that you want us to bring back an actual proposal on? I think it's entirely beneficial based on all of the, the things that we've talked about, about bringing in tourism, all of the actions that need to be taken. I would like to have a, a group of people that are working specifically on that. I've got, I think we've got some volunteers that are willing to do that. I think it would pay for itself in space.
Everyone tried this once before, and it didn't work. It was back when we had, I think, four years ago, we had, four or five years ago. Arnie, didn't we do this same thing?
No.
No.
All we did is we added cotton frag to promote the Skylock House as a visitor center and to bring in tourists. That was it. And this would be more expansive than what we.
And part of this would be looking at the hot funds, making sure that we're spending that according to the policy. We would have the hotel involved with that, and it's really making sure that we are properly promoting tourism and bringing money into the city. That's the bottom line, is trying to get more money into the city.
Darren, I'm in favor of moving forward with this. I would like to, yes, I'm in favor of this.
So, well, I just wanted to put it out one more time before I brought it back, make sure that you didn't have any, if you have any concerns about it, let me know. Otherwise, we'll put something together, get a proposal.
Let us, let us look at it, yes.
Okay. I've got, Arnie and Pat had put together some details on it. I'll send you over what we've got. I feel like we still need to get some more quantification on there. Conceptually, I absolutely agree with it. We just need to finalize some, some details with it. All right. Next item. All right, at seven forty-eight, discussion on possible action to approve a contract with the community council of South Central Texas for the administration of a utility assistance program.
All right, so you have a couple of contracts, and I purposely include, include several of them in there for you, so that you'd be able to see kinda how other entities have handled this, and they are very different. You will see that. There's some that are a page long, and there are others that are, you know, multiple pages long. What this is for is, as you recall, when we went back in, whenever that was, August or October, or whenever it was, that we adopted the utility rates, it was on the condition that we would put into place in January, by the end of January, so when these first bills come out, some type of utility assistance program. Most utilities have one. Most utilities fund it at a level of one percent or less of revenue, so if it's an eight million dollar utility, then they'll put eighty grand or less into utility assistance. That's generally just kind of a little fund. So, what I need your help, and what I'm coming to you for, number one, I, so I looked at, you know, well, who, how could we put together an assistance program? What do we have? Obviously, we have this group, this ecclesiastical group here in Casterville, and most cities do, which churches, the help out groups, but they're not really administrators of funds necessarily. They all kinda do their own thing. We have an existing relationship with the CCSCT. We now, currently, as a utility provider, that are, we already have a contract with them, and the contract basically stipulates that when they send us funds from their, from their pockets, which are generally grant funded or federal funded on some level, that we, as utility, will not cut off their client, and that we, as utility, will accept their funds on behalf of their client, which is also our customer. And so, that, we have a contract that, that reads like that, that actually is up for renewal. I'll bring it back to you at the next meeting. So, what I'm looking at doing is expanding that relationship and having them administer funds that we would give them, much in the same way that they administer funds, they get from grants and federal resources. What I need direction from you on is, first, I think we have a skunk, guys.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we're eating cheese. First, number one is, are you okay with doing the grant with CCST, or was there another entity that you all knew of that we could go utilize? Second is, if we do utilize them, what's the level of funding that you're comfortable with in putting towards this effort? And then, third, what are the parameters that we wanna set? Because unlike the federal government and the other grants, they'll have minimum earning requirements that are very, very, very low. Poverty level usually requirements. We can set our own, right, for eligibility. We could set our own standards. You know, is it a single, a single income family, for instance? Anyway, there, there's just different parameters you set. So, I don't know what your desires were about this program. I know that you were all on board of doing it. Do we wanna do a senior specific, or a veteran specific, or, you know, are there certain types of things we can put in place? I'll have to look into whether or not there are any legal ramifications from doing some of those, 'cause when you start a policy like this, you have to be careful not to be too exclusionary. But I do believe we have a window, when we're, we're veterans, and people who are disabled, and people who have limited incomes are concerned. So, I just need some direction on establishing those thresholds. We don't have to make this decision tonight necessarily. You can, we can try to bring it back on February eighth, but I, that means that the program would not be put in effect until February sometime. If you give me the direction tonight, I can actually start working on the contract and try to have it in place by the end of January.
I'd like to be as inclusionary as possible. You know, I'd make this as broadly, because we can't anticipate what situations people are gonna be in, and so to, to, to try to pigeonhole those, we're gonna miss one or two. So, I'd just really, really like to make it as broad as possible.
So, give me, that's wonderful. Give me some definitions about how.
Well, you included veterans, disabled, single income families, households, elderly. And, you know, I would love to be able to build in some flexibility in the decision-making process of the administrator.
Well, I'm not, I'll tell you, the way this is gonna operate, I will not be approving them, or, or not approving them. They will, we will give them the parameters and lay those out in the contract.
I see.
And then they will administer it, and they'll give us quarterly reports of how much of their fund, of our funds they've utilized.
Well, for instance, let's say the average utility that we're gonna try to help out is two hundred dollars per person. And I don't know what that is, is it a hundred or two hundred or whatever? But if it's just two hundred, then you could help, you could help seven people a month for your twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's still, yeah, it's still limited resources. Depends on, if we, yeah, twenty, twenty thousand would be half a percent of our revenues, forty thousand would be, I think, a percent, 'cause we're in that four million dollar mark.
Yeah, you could help eight people at that, at the twenty thousand. But, so I, I, but then if you really make it really exclude, if you, if you open it up, then it's gonna.
Well, then, at that point.
Keep in mind, the money is also first come, first served, so it doesn't have to be available. It's first come, first served, you just.
But then we're really not. Yeah, in, in some respects, then we wouldn't, really wouldn't be doing, if it's first come, first served, you're, you're really not fulfilling the, the, the hope of the program to actually help the needy, because.
Well, I, we have to define our liability, that's the issue. So, that's why it's first come, first served, because we, we are not a bottomless pit of revenue.
And that's what I'm finding.
The revenue's actually being reinvested in the system, as, as I think Councilman Dyer talked about when we talked about our rates. So, what, what you would do, you know, what you can do, you can also set limitations on the number of times that the same person is able to receive that support within a given period of time. So, you say, you know, you're good, you can receive aid one month every, out of every six months, right? So, you have to wait at least six months before you come back and ask for aid again.
I don't know that, that we would exhaust the available funds every month.
Yeah, I don't, I honestly don't know, because there are other programs out there that are already helping and assisting folks. The issue is, if, those are only aimed at and targeted at generally the poverty level folks. If we tried to expand it above that, then there may be more takers, if you will, more people who are interested.
Do we keep a running tab of how many people call saying that they're gonna, you know, need assistance with paying their bill?
No, no, there, we've had some, some good Samaritans in our community that have offered to help, and just anecdotally, when that has happened, we've only helped three or four folks. Not because there was a shortage of money, but because really there were only three or four folks at that time that needed the help. So, over Christmas break, for instance, that was the case. And, and again, I'm not saying there aren't more people, people that could use the help, it's just, it's, it's a, there's a lot of different, it's, it's a dynamic issue, right? There's a lot of folks who may need the help but won't ask for it.
Do we know what the parameters are for qualification or from those other funds that are operating?
That's why I sent them to you, but they're generally.
Those are those, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But they're generally going to be, follow the federal guidelines for, for poverty.
Okay.
That's, that's usually, and it's usually some percentage of the poverty level. And it can be a, but you can say a hundred twenty-five percent. Well, if poverty's twenty-two thousand dollars, that means that your household income can't exceed, whatever that is, twenty-eight, twenty-seven thousand dollars, twenty-six thousand dollars. So, it's a fairly small amount of money.
Councilman Dyer had a question.
I think that there's two issues. I think that the first question we have to answer is, what percentage of our revenue are we willing to give up? That, that's really the first question. And then, once we decide that it's viable, that we, out of being good citizens, we wanna vote to say we'll give up this percent of the revenue. Okay, once we've decided that, I strongly recommend we turn it over to this corporation, and we stay out of it. They are the professionals. They're doing this all over the state. This is the kind of thing that they, that they do. They're experts in it. It's not something that we should get involved in. They should set the parameters, they should set the guidelines, and we'll fund the program and see how it goes. That way, we're not liable, because there's lots of liability here, and they're gonna have to suffer the liability if they're gonna administer the program. I'm in favor of helping people, but I, I can guarantee you, whatever amount of money you wanna give away, they're gonna take. They're gonna take every penny of it. They need it. There's lots of needy people, and it's gonna get worse. So, we gotta be willing to sacrifice whatever amount of money we're gonna vote on, but I recommend we stay out of, out of the distribution process completely.
Well, I can just tell you, so I, I was on the Helping Hands Board. I've, I've been very involved in their efforts, and they, they do a similar, Helping Hands is one of their clients. So, so I'll push back a little bit. They don't use every penny, so it's, like, I've been on, in situations where we had sixty thousand dollars available, we only gave out thirty-two, right? So, it, it really depends on the need and how much, how much is available, how much comes forward. There are certainly times of need where, where you're gonna exhaust a supply pretty quickly, but because of the times of year, November, Christmas, there are types, those types of year. But that said, the, keep in mind, one of the reasons that, that you all said that you wanted to do this program was to help Casterville, Casterville citizens who were living on limited incomes pay their utility bills. And a lot of those folks may not meet the base requirements, because they do have social security, they do have, they may have slightly more than what they would need to qualify. That's why I was suggesting that we set our own parameters, so that, so that we have an idea. But it, but you may need more information to do that, and I, I can respect that. I just, I need to have an idea at least of what you're looking for, so I can start to put some stuff together.
I think it would be positive if we, if we set the, the budget amount that we would support, that we have you go and take a look at what those parameters need to look like. Again, this is, in, in the face of changes to utility rates, we need to make sure that, that we're not basically dragging people out.
Well, I suppose we could get, we could start the program using, as, as Councilman Dyer suggested, just using their typical requirements.
Yes.
To agree on the funding amount, and then look at the performance, how many people are actually able to utilize that from Casterville? Because that's the other thing, is they have to be, they, they, we're not giving this to them to utilize for their customers. This would be specific to Casterville customers. It'd be a separate funding source for support for just Casterville.
And the first period would give us data to make any adjustments.
Sure.
Because right now, we don't have any data.
Right. That'd be one, that'd just be one approach.
Is it a motion?
Yeah. I'll make an emotion. I would move to approve a contract with community council of South Central Texas for administration of a utility assistance program.
Not exceed?
Not exceed.
At what amount?
Yeah. We, we're, we're looking at twenty thousand dollars in the proposal from staff.
Per year?
Per year. At twenty thousand dollars annually.
Great. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Great. Any discussion?
Is, is this, the only discussion is, are we saying it's just gonna automatically continue, or are we gonna come back and look at this in a year?
We'll probably look at this throughout the year. I, I wanna look at, get quarterly reports, that'll be part of the, the delivery mechanism from CCST, CT, so that you all can see how it's going.
But wouldn't it have to be approved in every budget? It needs to budget one.
Right, yeah, this would be an annual approval. You're not approving it indefinitely.
In the budget.
Yes, you're correct.
Any other discussion? Great. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. At eight o'clock, the next item is presentation of possible action on issuing a request for proposals for GIS services.
And at this, I'll hand this over to Brianna. What we're, she's, she's got kind of a general outline of what we're looking to do. In short, we know that we've got GIS needs. We need, we know we need to establish, I told Clay, seven forty-five, and I was off, so. My phone is our recording device. We aren't able to record. The live stream is going, but that's why I keep.
So, actually, do we want to, do we wanna table this item?
Do the executive session, we could.
Let's table this, go to executive session.
She's been sitting there all night long waiting to present this. That's fine. Brianna lost waiting.
Oh, but we're keeping you late.
No, that's all right.
I appreciate that. I've got a nice year.
Are you okay with that, Brianna?
Yeah, that's fine.
You sure?
We'll be brief, I promise.
Cool. All right.
Fifteen minutes or less.
So, we're, we're gonna move on to item number, which one is this? Eighteen? We're gonna go into executive session. The city council will meet in closed session under provisions of the Texas Government Code, section five five one dot zero seven one, entitled Consultation with Attorney, and section five five one dot zero eight five, entitled Deliberation Regarding, excuse me, Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. The items under, excuse me, discussion are West Side Story, Square Deal, and Happy Hills. We're gonna go into executive session at eight oh-three.
I was just wondering if the chief chased up that skunk in the parking lot.
We did what now?
I wondered if it was the chief who chased up that skunk.
I didn't smell that, yeah, I thought it was smell.
I said, let's see how that smells. Oh, man.
It's got the dirt, I can even find it.
Yeah, but let me just see, I don't know.
Better hear it at my house.
Office feels like. And I can turn this over, it's like sixty-eight, it's not very, not too hot.
The reason there's no water in, the reason there's no water in the bathroom, for whatever reason, all three valves, I pulled the water, the bathroom's dirty, they pulled the water on the commode stuff. They're turned on now, by the women, anywhere, I turned it on, and that's why I was going, turning on, standing there looking.
Thank you, Arnie, for making...
I'll send it to you.
I was gonna say, you do, uh, the facility services, Matthew?
Can you check the women, do we run it fine?
Like a women's bathroom?
Yeah, I went to women's too.
There's just so many people here.
Why would anybody shut it off?
What was it?
In the men's bathroom, and her came back, he said there's no water anywhere in the men's bathroom.
Yeah, and so we shut it off?
And he said that the guy who was the grand authority said, I think he came out of that bathroom. But, yeah, the valve floor with the commode and two valves on the workspace, and I pulled the water, all three of them were shut off. And, you know, you can't hear any water running or anything else, you turn it on, no noise, flush the commode, we didn't do flush.
Yeah.
Fills up just fine, I flushed it again, twice, it fills up just fine, shuts off. The only thing I could think of, the heater came on back there, and you could hear, there was a heat vent, you know, the ceiling, you could just hear, hmm, if it learned or whatever, thought that there was water running. And then, at the same time, he tried to flush it, it was, you know, blah, blah, blah. He may have flushed it, heard it, and maybe whatever, or a business, a lot of talk. But you could hear, hmm, I could go, something leaking. And so, I waited long enough back there, and then when the heat went off, there was total silence, you know, there's nothing beating.
Yeah, it was a ghost of city hall.
Well, there's plenty that they've been there before, and we've had to...
I know.
Well, about here, and they've found all this stuff. In fact, the girl, the weather girl, Katie Bleep, she came along, it was her first or second day on the job with Seattle twelve, and she had an interest in hearing about ghost stories, and just came with them. And she was one, when they came down from the second floor, heard noises, voices up there in the hallway right here, heard little kids talking.
Yeah.
And then she was outside all, you know, wound up, both, well, I hurt all this, but, God, this is weird and crazy.
That's why, uh, what's it called? Deborah says she hears them all the time. I've been here late for meetings and stuff, and I've never heard of them, but I, one day I will, probably, and it's gonna freak me out, so. I don't know.
Let's see, I can pick up names, which I, I just can't relax, I'm, I'm government invested security. She was physical, there's, there's...
I think it's just not...
Did it talk back here, I mean, you had it all...
No, yeah, it's on, no, it's on, but it's not, okay, that turned it off, right, okay.
It's back to the Microsoft blue screen.
Yeah, okay.
Where you were flipping through four or five, they were what, they were all showing up? In fact, I think her was watching those, or was it discussion?
Oh, was he, 'cause I kept flipping back through them?
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause, well, no, 'cause, so what I have to do is I have to show them like a website after, and it's just not letting me use it.
Well, all that showed up was the different, well, that cover slide, GIS mapping, and then you guys have letters that never on there, one or two, and then you go back. Now, that's your laptops or tablet or whatever for the office?
Yeah.
Has he ever used it in here before?
Yeah, it's one of my, I don't know, it's not...
All your committee, it's very landmark, depending if they're real.
Yeah, I use it all the time here, that's why I'm still...
Well, maybe because you talked about ghost, well, before you came here.
I know, I'm not, I just...
It's not a spreadsheet.
It's just connected to what I use. Okay, let me see, so, that goes, correct, okay.
Okay, here, I'm the GIS cover, any good flowers up here?
Yeah, okay. And then, maybe in spotlight, I'm trying to...
And you're like the Microsoft, now you're up with the GIS mapping upside. Now you got, you had that up all over, the GIS mapping, Christian, or what is it?
Yeah, it kind of goes back out, kind of, but not when you, when you search for that.
Is there like a full screen and something else on the, uh...
Yeah.
Now, now you got, whatever you did, just leave it full size, and then click to the next one to it.
Um, surface? What, some, after?
Is it like power, why don't you just hit next, check, next?
Yeah, it's like that, so when I get to, when I get to over, what these are, is their webpages. So, I need it when I click on it to go...
Like click on Ennis, or just...
Yeah, I click on, so I click on Ennis, and so this webpage comes up, but it doesn't show it on there.
Up here, while I go, you had all this letter for that. Why are we looking at this here, now, if you didn't slip?
Um, could you, uh... Where did you go to?
Now it's up to that?
Yes, okay. Okay, let me see if I hit it on there, but then if I go back over to...
So, you said, then without buying, you put it real?
That goes, now I'm gonna go over here.
There's a tab for weather.
There it goes.
Can you show the column?
Huh?
Can you show the column?
I want to show it to someone here.
Maybe blue hide order. Sure we have downtown, parts way across the street, take one there.
Okay. Okay, that works.
There's that good wood box. I'm basically, this is already business, I can do it, for the last time I got home, yeah. So many times I got home, I did, well, Saturday was on the eighty-three, mail, for all of that, and we even voiced out that, that cell service had a guy that was inside.
Oh, no.
So, I set up, I got home at five minutes to eat, and stayed up till almost eleven, trying to eat a little bit, we had that whole cereal, going through all the emails, responding to them. And there weren't jokes and cartoons and junky stuff to eat this week. We're in Castroville, where you sure are, we're gonna be, I'm sure we get charged for this, that, or...
I don't know, I've been to, I'm at the stage where I have to pee every hour on the hour, so...
Yeah. Well, and Derek's gonna go back to something else, that's where they were talking about that forty-five thousand dollar price increase, and I've signed the contract, it's all that kind of thing, for a, talking about, I think they're bondage, well, I'm talking about, we have a bondage today.
Oh.
But the bids, if they use last September, the building opened, it was there, about elementary. If they use exactly the same building footprint to build the next elementary, about a mile away.
Yeah.
The price, when they finalized the bill on the one that opened in September was three hundred fifty dollars per foot. The projected deals, they're getting between four hundred thirty, four hundred fifty dollars this year, with a delay in steel control, but that's thirty percent increase provided here this year. And the bond issue will have two elevens, a middle, and a high school, plus some other stuff. And they have to have several of them, ready to go for the twenty-five school year. So, it's like, we're trying to guess, if the inflation continues, and the supply chain stuff, and all the others. If we build one next year, that's, well, one is the start, next month or so, it's already jumped thirty percent. And as it, last year's bond issues, what is this price gonna be when we start the school in twenty-three? Uh, in or we're gonna have to, you know, raise the bond issue fifty million dollars more, or a hundred million dollars more, what we go, what to, the government's, but just, they're talking about the crazy skyrocketing price, and I'm thinking, I just... I comment, I just wanna do honorable, you know, I did, I put fins up, we're having to land over in D.C. When I got the first bid, asked for three, when I got the second one, it took almost a month. First, I said, prices no longer good, I'm not even gonna do it. The second, the third one, it came in about three weeks apart, and they both honored what their prices were. But, the second one is the one I went with, at Finsfield, but yeah, I bought it before. You know, I sent this guy, which I, I don't really know him, but I know his family. Somebody, not because of the building fans, but they sent me one of these like price inflation stuff, there's Montgomery Morris catalog page that was nineteen thirty-seven, the price of one school of barflyer, fourteen gauge, two points on it. And all schools have been the same, forty thirty, because quarter of a mile on school. Nineteen thirty-seven price, this school was a dollar eighty-seven cents. The price today is ninety-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents.
That's crazy.
And you figure, if you're putting Russian seven, you put trans barflyer, and you put car schools, and it just ends. And, you know, fifteen hundred forty feet, you just spent five hundred dollars just for getting that far.
Not good.
But that doesn't include the post, and the labor that put the post in, and all that, and you got almost a mile, same thing, you're gonna put it up, you start. All right, well, but it's gotta be...
Yeah, I didn't even think about that, 'cause we started, thinking about starting, because I was looking to... Well, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if it'll go down.
I would say probably in the next couple years, and then, you know, all this past, all the predictions and stuff, I know, brings up, there's another reason. I would say the infection, I would think, is over for another two to three years, within the second operating, the interest rates, or things. So, therefore, that does, everything's, obviously, cost more. And part of it, put it that way, you know, region, or, probably, for real, there's, every price alone now in the area is three hundred fifty thousand dollars starting, and it's, well, how many people can afford that? Probably in the next ten years, you know, they're making thirty thousand dollars a year, or, you know, you gotta get, they gotta pay rent for utility, they never need a house. And there's, you know, federal programs are there to do something, but they're not there to do two hundred fifty thousand dollars in rent, that'll be sort of house, or whatever, they need, so, you know, I'm not terrible at gas station homes. And there's about two fifty, or two ninety-five, three hundred, three seventy-five, and so forth, originally. What are they gonna do with the first one? Open to the door that you can, like, get on the ladder, score.
And it was also that you can get for like around two hundred, they get like a thousand, so, I was like, they got a subdivision there, about sixty-four, and they got Southwest on the right side. Man, it's how, like, maybe not for the last ten years.
That's where the next elementary school is going.
Is it? Their house is, they're, they're...
They're basically, not like, basically pre-fan, or like, these mobile, double-wide mobiles. They are, people, they speak different ways, but you can definitely reach out and say to your neighbor. I gotta talk to somebody, they, part of my life, trading, school, or whatever, is the sociological impact of crapping animals and people, several related things, and when the first federal projects were built back in the early fifty, after World War Two, one of the biggest ones that they built first was St. Louis. They built, I don't remember, there's two of them, but they were like ten-story towers, and all of them. And basically, we don't need new houses, things, it's, they're building, we're, we're always have stuff, we're all about, you know, seventy, eight, nine, eighty at most. They decided, they started referring to them as Warrens, which is what, you know, it's essentially called. The postal office, you got your box, your box, your box, your box, your box, all these Warrens are stacked on top of each other. There is no space, it psychologically drives people to do nasty things, and nasty things. They came in, you know, more scattered housing, and dynamited, embedded, built buildings, and said, the worst thing they could ever do is just squash people together.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, out here, that's not a story, but it's insane difference on the ground. And I made a comment to somebody, one of my older brothers bought his first house in, or part of Houston at that time. Now, that's not talented, but beautiful subdivision, all brick, all single-story, and it looked like a lot of, you know, you just been building, and all painting, and deciding, I don't know, anything like that, you did, well, if you looked at the house, here's the firm of the house, but on the side, to your block, there was kind of a skull up, they upgraded, they didn't put a post on it. So, it looked like your house was this way, just took up to that, which your lot was, which your house is this big.
Yeah.
Your neighbor's skull in front, was about that far from your skull in front.
Yeah.
So, literally, you could, you stopped and touch your neighbor. Well, I joked with him about that, forever, my younger brother and I went over, actually, he did all painting. Said, he still, he had time, you know, the hammer kind of thing, he never did good, he wasn't around doing that, he was always working, doing, finding just, you know. And he said, I don't know, that was, would have been like nineteen, probably sixty-three, or four. And a couple years ago, they were used to, those, we still have, and then we do, and all that kind of stuff, that we go into the area, and say, it looks like a war zone, and Pakistan, you know, but... a war zone, and Pakistan, you know, but, and I said, it's just, they're big houses, they're there, like, they're not, they're, they're, when they're broken out, they'd be whatever, and said, it's just sand and sea, but for whatever reason, it all went down to, I said, we probably didn't get back, squashing people together. And that's the era, you know, a lot of, a thousand houses on the five acre lot, I'm gonna make more money, and we built a little. It went down, they didn't call it up, they didn't have to work. And it proved their fault, so. Plenty of brutal problems, we worked with, sociological, sociocultural.
That's true.
Is there fifteen minutes left?
I can't remember. I told him, I was like, okay, yeah.
Was it eight oh three?
Was it eight oh three? And they put two minutes in, long, long.
I was killed during that, I don't, you can't, you can't, you have to carry it, I don't know, I think it was short. It was in the Mary's quarter, and then forty seven, it was like, was that long? And then, you have to carry it, I don't know, I think it was short.
I knew that, I knew the parking thing was gonna take a, a minute.
I was like, I'm already dead, I'm in my fourth page, but, shout it out.
I'm pretty sure Devin probably wanted to, but it's that advice.
We had a very good, interesting, built a D M E.
Good job.
Mostly, I mean, most people with the program, they don't like, say some all, relations of their people. Well, next people, I'll have an O L P, that O L P, that's S B C, and everything else, production and going in in Monaco. And, and some, and I went through all their, I mean, and stuff, and having, you know, the stuff they produce, took a month, they've already started, hoping this is all going to improve, it was years from when you started, and they can grow crops over that, something running, they got crops to start working with, but it's gonna become kind of a major production center in the Americas. And they're talking like, last year, they sold only four hundred million tons of avocado oil.
Yeah.
And they get, I don't tell them that in five years, it has made us basically, makes me fully, yeah. Okay, I know I see fifteen minutes, I drive a little hard, but, which was my whole answer. How about the?
Oh, I've been going all day, and I need another, my mother got my truck pulled back together.
We told him.
Fifteen minutes, it was over.
They did. I didn't pay you, you made all of it, you probably did.
I had to drill all the way through both.
Yeah.
No, I said, I gotta drill the pitch screen.
Grab a chair, put your head down.
Same one with junior, you drill it out. They made the cooking room out there. I had, I went and talked.
All right. Hey Phil, we gotta hurry. Rihanna's gotta go home.
We're back. Fifteen minutes flat, right?
He's gonna cap out. Hey Phil, Phil, could you run over and get a pillow and a blanket for Rihanna, cause she's gonna end up spending the night? Yeah, we.
Last thing, if you didn't like her, I'll deliver a couple of copies.
So Arnie said that he would bring the pillow.
We have two markets and also.
All right. Next, we're gonna reconvene in open session at eight twenty-nine. Uh, and then, um, so we're taking no action, uh, based on executive session. Uh, the next item is presentation and possible action on issuing a request for proposals for G I S services.
All right. Okay, what is G I S mapping? Um, I'm sure most, many of y'all have used this, and y'all find it work at some form or another, um, but, uh, the most notable, I guess the most one that people reference is Google Maps. That's what G I S mapping is. Um, they have the street layer, the aerial, the traffic layer, um, but there's so much more that you can do with G I S mapping. Um, let's see, so really it's about collecting data and putting it visually on the map. You can make so many S L spreadsheets of all this data that goes everywhere. Like what G I S does is it takes all that data and it puts it in a form where you can really recognize what is, like, what is trying to portray, that data is trying to portray. Okay, let's see, so the software organization analyzing this quiz data, uh, in relation to location, everything has to be located, um, it has to be directly located, and that's how it analyzes it.
Geopositional.
Geopositional.
Satellite tracking.
It's the anti-backhoe locator.
Yes.
Yes, and like multiple, outside municipal planning, construction, people use it for their design build, oil and gas, you'd use it for data capture, um, telecoms use it, um, just for deployment, where they're gonna hit their lines. So let's see here, um, how does it work? So as you can see from this picture, it works in layers. So first you have like your top street layer, you can put your street names, you can put where it's located, uh, you can play intersections, things like that. And then, let's say you wanna add some buildings to that, you wanna put where your schools are, where your houses are, where, anything that you can think of buildings, you could put that as a different layer, layer. Um, it says vegetation, but I feel like more people would know it as, uh, or would utilize a utility layer.
I'd say manholes and fire hydrants.
Yeah, manholes, fire hydrants, where those lines lay, what size those lines are. And then you can put it all together at the bottom, so you have something to look at and you have something to work with. Um, and that's, in the essence, that is what G I S mapping does. It takes all the data and it makes it into different layers that you can use for your benefit.
What if you don't have the data?
You have to collect that data.
You have to hire a surveyor.
That's very important. In the back of your head. Well, if we had all that data, this, that would be a very easy proposition, but we don't have.
I wanna pause you though.
We have a lot of that data.
One of the things that we require is that all our engineering partners provide us data layers, G I S data layers on their, on their projects. Secondarily, one of the things that I've initiated, I've done, that fits within my domain, my relevant authority, is to approve the purchase of a G I S location device. Uh, so I don't, I can't, I can't say, well, certainly it's been bought yet, but I told Pugget Works, this is something you must do, and you must do it fast, soon. So that every time we backhoe locate something, or don't, and are just putting new lines or anything else, there, the goal is that every time they do a project, they're, the new inspector we hired goes out and creates, collects a G I S data point for that, that item. And then those will be collected and put in layers, so, because they'll be identified as water line, sewer line, manholes, uh, all the different components, and each one of those will have its own layer. So we are collecting data, uh, we're starting now, uh, but you're right, there's a lot of legacy data we don't have, but, but we have more than, we have quite a bit. It's just not been organized in any fashion.
There's a lot of places you can get like data from. You can get it from the county, has a lot, um, just FEMA, they have a lot, and they, a lot of these places, they offer that up for the municipalities. We already have a lot of those things, um, because they want us to be able to utilize it and not have to go to them for every day for things that we could be using with that one, I guess.
So they would basically have the map set up, I mean, it. Can we talk about the layers that we do have? I'm sorry, cause I, just for education purposes.
Yeah, no, so, things that we already have right now, zoning, district, uh, some of these layers need work, but it's things that we do have, um, FEMA, uh, we have, um, LiDAR, so elevations of things.
I know we have the streets, I, I believe, right before I got here, Devin had a group come in and do all the streets, so that, when they did that, they found every manhole, every sign, and every street. And so all of those are separate layers that that system created.
Yeah, I think we even have, um, the E S D, I think they did a fire hydrant one not too long ago, so I think we have, we have a lot of, we actually do have a lot of data, but we don't have a place to use that data.
They, some years ago, we had a, an engineer that we hired, or he was the city, the company was the city engineer, and they came through the, through town and measured manholes and fire hydrants and, and valves and everything else. I have a copy of that data.
Yeah, there, it's all over the places.
It's thousands of points.
And a lot of these places, um, like when they did the sewer line, um, or the new sewer, um, sorry, park.
Water wastewater treatment.
Yes, there you go, sorry guys. Um, all of that stuff, everything that they worked around, all of those have data points that you can include into your system, and they all have that, like, where we could put that in, and we know that's accurate, cause we know that that just got built, we have the, what, you know, the plans for that. And so we do have data out there, we just gotta go find it and put it together, which is the.
One spot.
The, the kicker is that with that, that measuring device that they need is going to have to be a, um, network reference G P S unit, otherwise it's plus or minus ten feet.
Right, well, we're actually looking at one foot accuracy.
Yeah, okay.
We spoke to the city in North Cape East, and he gave us some recommendations, it was a few months ago, different kinds that we could do with the after.
The only reason I don't know if they purchased it yet, cause I was, I went to the demo, and the guy that was supposed to do the demo didn't show up, which is never good for a salesperson. So I don't know what happened after that, because after that was New Year's and COVID that took out our staff, so I don't know if it's been purchased yet, but we're working on it, it's.
And you were saying in your, in your document there, that you think it's maybe between about two hundred thousand and three fifty, is that for the software, or is that we're hiring somebody to merge all this stuff?
Hiring somebody to merge all this stuff.
To take it and create, can we look, I know this is, I don't.
No, I know about the layers.
Okay, I mean, let's just keep going, yeah, cause it's not, um, cause actually, everything that we're talking about is things that, that were just in the presentation, like, you know, other things that we can use it for is, like I said, the FEMA, but comprehensive planning, so you can put your thoroughfare on there, you can put your, uh, you know, future land use, um, locations of utilities, um, I know we had a huge water leak break the other day over here, that, we would have our guys go out there, get the data for that, and then put where the new bouncer at. You know, you just, every time you do something, you just keep adding to it, and that's what the engineering firm.
Well, the big benefit is for, for development, as developers come, which we're, I mean, I just really, 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 really wish we already had this in place, because it will spur additional development. If they have a site they can go to and get all their answers, they're much more likely to choose you for, as a development location. If they have to go find it all out and hire an engineer to do it all, uh, you're gonna be bottom of the list. They're gonna pick the easiest place first.
And so, and that kind of brings you over to like, what can it do for every, I mean, we know what we can, what it does for us as a city, but what can it do for everybody else? So they have, where it's a public portal, and anybody can go look at it, I guess a lot of people probably maps, uh, Google Maps is one of those things, um, if you go to the county website, their interactive map, that's a G I S, where you can pick and choose your layers. Um, so I went ahead and I went to a few cities, just a couple, I wanted to keep it as simple, there's some cities where it's like over a while to look at it, and then there's some cities that did it really well, where it's very user-friendly, and so I found those user-friendly cities, cause I think that's always more beneficial.
You shouldn't have to be an engineer to figure out how it works.
Exactly.
That's why I like the one that we have.
She did figure it out.
So these are not in your presentation, these are just for one to go.
These are the links that were in her presentation, I believe.
Going live links.
And why, Ennis is one of them.
Imagine that.
Imagine that, you know.
I really liked their system, I'll just be honest, I didn't put it in place, I can't take credit, but.
Yeah, so, I mean, just looking at it, you can already tell that it gives you a lot of information.
City limits, there's E T J.
Yeah, the E T J, the city limits, district names.
So go down to, uh, Kaufman Development District, it has layers, you see that?
Kaufman.
There it is, right there.
Yeah.
Turn that little, click that box.
Click on that box.
Click the box next to it.
No, no, the top box.
There you go.
There you go. All right, so, for instance, one of the things they did was, uh, Kaufman was a major, it's like I forty-five, the old business I forty-five that runs through there, they established this district as part of the U D O process. And when they did their U D O, uh, every area, if it was a buffer zone, the buffer zone was not just some part written in the zone, it was a zoning, it was, it was an actual, its own zone, with its own code. And then, maybe you had a transitional zone after that, or you had a, uh, multifamily area, or a mixed-use area, or you had a mixed-use downturn area, so each of one of those had their own zoning areas, and each one of those ends up getting its own, its own G I S layer as well. And then you can get additional data out of that G I S layer when it's up. Another way that was used, you can see fire hydrants, fire station districts, parcels, but there was a annexation list that should be on there somewhere. There we go. So if you look at annexation, they did multiple, um, annexation develop, not, we call them development agreements, but they're really non-development agreements, because it's where people agreed not to develop. As long as they signed it, they would not be annexed, but if they didn't sign it, and they wouldn't agree, then they were annexed by the city. And that's something that home rule cities can do, and it's, and it's legal. So what you're looking at are all those parcels that over, I think, two or three different cycles where we do these development agreements, the city ended up annexing in. Um, and so we could, we could carve those out and look at them individually by, uh, the date that they were annexed. And it ended up being very, very, very useful, uh, for planning tools for the city commission and city council when they wanted to go in and look at this stuff, and all this was publicly available.
Yeah, I, I guess just to move this discussion off, because we're getting up close to nine o'clock, I would like to make a motion that we.
We don't make the motion. There's a motion.
I believe there's an action item.
Sir, action item.
I hope so.
I hope so, too.
Presentation, possible action.
Possible action, thank you. All right, sorry.
So I would like. I read my own agenda, I'm sure. Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we, uh, that city staff, um, develop proposals for, R F P for a G I S services.
Second.
All right.
Discussion.
I think that we need to be careful, because I don't think these prices are realistic. Uh, I don't have any expertise in G I S, but the infrastructure part I am versed in. Uh, we have nothing now, so we're gonna start from nothing.
No, we're starting from not enough.
We, we have a lot of information.
You don't have the G I S system in place, you have a bunch of data that you've got saved, but it's not integrated. But my point is, when we start off on this, we probably ought to take the approach that we're gonna go in phases and come up with some good ideas for what do you want, what capability you want initially, maybe what do we add next year, and what do we add the year after, because we're gonna find, no matter what we say, when you start getting the proposals, your eyeballs are gonna start rolling around in your head.
So, can I just point out one thing, that's why I wanted to bring up this weather for it, is cause first of all, like I said, the user friendliness, but if you look down, you can see where, if you look up, you can see where they have the utilities, like, so that's, and I, that's what they're working towards, but they had, they started with annexation, zoning, all of these things, it's gonna take time. It's not something you can throw together a proposal and it's all gonna happen at one time, it's gonna take time, years, and multiple resources to me.
Scott made the point that we're requiring every contractor, every developer is required to give us G I S.
Yes.
Data, so we're, we're good for the future in getting it, we just gotta build a system that can absorb it and not lose it, and can protect it.
And the first thing we need to do is develop the system.
Yeah, right.
So I, my motion still stands.
And then training.
Well, and keep in mind, we're gonna put together an R F P, we're not, you're not authorizing us to go, authorizing us to hire someone, it's to put together an R F P, the R F P will give us an idea about our pricing. I think, Herb and I don't agree, he thinks it's a million dollars, I think the pricing I put on there is accurate. I think you can develop a full-fledged system just like Ennis and his, for that range, because they did, and Weatherford did, and Atul he did, and other cities I know that did, uh, he used an example from those cities where they spent a million, and I don't know how they spent over a million dollars. I, I can see Dallas doing it, I can't see some of the sizes.
Cause they're not exact.
That's just, that's just irresponsible. So I think we'll be, we'll be very satisfied to stay within the budget, but, you know, I'm willing to admit, if I'm wrong, when we get our R F Ps back and they're weighed out a lot of slack, I think they're gonna be in that range, but.
Yeah, we're not, we're not committed to them.
Right.
Let's see what it costs.
And no matter what, we need to start at some point.
We actually voted, we actually voted to do this four years ago.
Yes.
And what happened?
Nothing.
Cause that's when I just got on city council.
Yeah, got, killed.
It was very up and.
Interesting.
The community development got killed.
Well, I know, you talk about issuing bonds, and the bonds were issued, and that, that defunded most of what you want to talk about. Well, that's part of the issue.
I was sitting there thinking what happened, I can remember what happened.
Uh, do we have more discussion on this, or?
No, all right.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Good night. Why did so long, it'd be so short.
Good report, thank you.
I'll go home, get comfy clothes and.
I'm impressed, by the way, compliments to both, or both of y'all, everybody, the fact that you guys can put this stuff on the screen for us live like that is good, I like that.
It's very helpful.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, have a great night.
Drive safely.
Good night, Brianna.
Yeah, watch out for the deer on the way to Lidl.
I have to look out for deer in my front yard.
That's true.
Watch out for skunks in the parking lot.
Are you leaking?
We can smell it coming here.
I have a toddler, I haven't chased after us.
So, we understand. Oh, yes. Take care. Good night. Watch for the skunk back there.
Oh, I know.
I think it left, hopefully.
I think it did.
Probably.
Next item at 8:45. Item number 17, staff reports.
So, yeah, you mentioned the time, I'll remind you to do that, because I only have a couple items to mention on staff report. One of them is that the mayor and I have talked about adding KF, what, K?
KPIs.
KPIs. No, KRs, whatever.
Oh, KRs.
Whatever, oh KRs.
Remind us again what those were?
Objectives and key results. Basically, ways to quantify our success.
So I will be, I've challenged the staff to do an introspective self-appraisal that is very, very different than anything they've ever done. It's different than what I've done, frankly. But it's, it's only five or six questions, but each question is intended to make them think about a different area, and it's really meant, meant to make them think more strategically, rather than just, am I doing my J O B? But, but what am I doing that's actually benefiting that this city as a whole? And I got to give credit to the mayor for, for kind of pushing me down that road and that direction. I was already kind of thinking about a self-appraisal, but, but he helped me really shape it in a, in a different way than, than I would have done on my own. So that is ongoing. I will remind them tomorrow that, that I hope to have the responses by the end of the month. The airport manager's already gotten his, so he wins the prize for being the first, and I'll actually be meeting with him this Thursday over his results. But as we have those discussions, one of the things that I'll be talking about with the department heads is the development of what they determine to be success. How do they define success? And then we're going to talk about, well, how do you measure success? What ways are you comfortable measuring success? And we will start a report on that, and you'll see that at the top of these reports, so that when, the first thing you see is some data, if you will, on what we think are key objectives, key, key strategic initiatives and objectives that will lead to outcomes that we find to be of strategic importance in the city. Okay? So that is, that'll start. The other thing I was going to mention is if you looked at our public works, in our public works report, JJ, and I should have looked, but. Two folks received their A license, and I am thrilled about that. I think that's fantastic. I cannot compliment those staff members enough. I'll let you highlight it, I think there is. Jeremiah Jacobs and Ricky Katerowska, now Ricky is our new inspector, they both have Class A licenses now. They have two Class A licenses, water and windwater. That's, that's phenomenal. For a city of our size, especially. Those folks are worth even a week of gold. We need to be aware of that. They can name their price at most cities if they have a Class A, because everybody needs one. So, or most cities need a Class A. So I'm very, very, very happy with them doing that, and I just want to make all of their success. I don't know if there is much else in the report that I want to highlight.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely.
Can we develop something like professional pay and pay them for the achievement of licenses that are very hard to get?
So we do, they get certificate pay, and, and the certificate pay increases depending on classes.
So they do get compensated for having done?
They also get compensated if they get a Class E, or, I'm sorry, yeah, commercial driver's license. There's a number of things that we incentivize them to do. They don't always take us up on it.
JJ's worked hard.
Yes.
Yeah, I saw him when he, I saw him after he got his results, and my husband had asked him about the pay thing, so.
Yeah. So one of the things I am convening, and I, I, I'm not late, honestly. I, I wanted to get it done in January, January's not over, but is an employee group, you're on it, remember, you and Hilda and several others?
Oh, um, yes.
Where I'm going to have various employees from around, from different departments in the city advise me on some of our policies. And this is aimed at retention and attraction. We'll look at the benefits of paying, going back to some of the very candid discussions we've had about trying to fill these positions. I know for a fact that some of our stuff is out of whack. It's not, we're not being as generous as we need to be in some areas. I don't want the Indians to run, rule the roost, or the chickens rule the roost, I guess. I don't want to be discouraging, but, yeah, it's in other words, you don't, you don't want your subordinates telling you what to do necessarily, and setting all the policy. But at the same time, you do need to hear from them. You need to open the opportunity to give them feed, you know, important feedback. So that's what this is aimed to do. It's not necessarily that, that they'll be setting policy, but they will be informing the policy. And, you know, what they have, what they say matters, and it will be heavily weighted. Well, that's what I mean, that that will be the outcome, but it will be heavily weighted. It'll, it'll depend a lot on how much we can afford, and what's prudent, and what's sustainable, and that kind of thing. So that is also an effort that I anticipate to, to start here in January.
I know people. I know two, so far.
What? That are on it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I've been hurt.
I do have the list, I just need to, to start that up. With that, were there any other questions? I don't know, airport, if you read Chuck Norris, there was a Chuck Norris quote in there. I challenge you to do that when I first got here, and I want to give kudos to David, because ever since, he's done it every time. So in here, I believe it's right there. If you spell Chuck Norris in Scrabble, you win forever. Which I think is great. He always tries to include something there just to kid our attention. So are there any questions about any reports that we deliver to you?
Um, I had a question on upcoming discussion for planning and zoning. So the last item on here is the transition areas. I think we need to look at a couple of different options on there. One is establishing the ordinance as it's written to be transferable to another property owner. The other one, I think, is going to be, you had mentioned it on the other one, developing a permanent transition zone that has its own stipulations. Because if they fall within that, they should always get the SUP anyway, and I think that it should be.
So that's what, yeah, so we're looking at two different phases. So the first phase is to correct our existing ordinance and remove the SUP, but truthfully, UDO, replace all of that.
Right.
Even the work we're doing right now, to fix some, some things, I view that as short-term. Those are Band-Aids to fix an existing problem. So the events center taking care of that classification, and taking care of this. They will inform the UDO, in other words, there will be things that we need to carry forward into the UDO. But the UDO effectively will replace all of that, because it will have its own, it'll give me complete code.
Totally acceptable.
What's that? Unified development ordinance. And the idea of unified development means it's zoning, and design standards, and, you know, building standard, and all in one.
And you don't have contradictions, because you don't, you don't have things written down differently, in different ways, in different places, so.
It's all in one place.
Right.
Yeah, I definitely support that.
She was going to do a presentation on that tonight, but I think we've moved all that to second, first or second meeting in February. I think it's second meeting.
Because they're talking about this in their planning and zoning with the public here.
Yeah, I like that. Okay. The other thing is, and this will be part of our discussion about metrics, for example, with the, for the code enforcement, the one, well, one thing that this is missing is resolution. So it talks about what happened. It would be good to track what is the resolution on this, especially as we have these things that happen in individual council districts. I know that people are getting hit up from their neighbors about.
Yeah, it's missing a column. It's got status, well, it's got status open and closed. It does say compliance received, and I think what that means, when you read compliance, I'll, I'll see. So rather than.
Well, compliance received means that they changed what they were doing. For example, if we have an illegally parked vehicle, they move the vehicle, compliance received.
Right. If, if they were working without a permit, they wouldn't get a permit.
Right.
Right. So do you need more than that?
Um, yeah, I think with the open ones, just what.
Like filed in municipal court.
Oh, some kind of ongoing, so rather than just open, have it, have it open and, and give us an update of where it is, okay? Waiting on.
So, so here, for instance, on October 15th, we're pending compliance, there is an illegal parked vehicle in grass or non-park paved areas.
From October.
From October?
Yes.
So how long do we leave them where you wait for them to move it?
Well, that, this is exactly why I think y'all requested this data, is to be able to ask some questions like that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's perfect.
So, I mean, filed in, you know, here, from the same time period, October 4th, off-street parking, and those were filed in municipal court, so we can understand that that's, but, you know, so.
Yeah, well, that, that, that location, you see the one underneath it, it has, that, that location is a problematic. It has multiple fences, that's why it's in court.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the one where it says pending compliance on, on law.
That's a good question.
Yeah, so, so some of these are, are, yeah, open, and, and again, here's another one, oh, that's only February 26th, so that's okay. February, oh, February 26th to 21. You know, here's again, illegally parked vehicle from, so it's, it still must be.
Illegally parked.
Illegally parked, and this is from February 26th of 21. So this is the third from the bottom, by the way. So what's going on there?
That was my car. I moved it. You know, honestly, I, I think that that is, he's saying it's your, I'm not naming names, but.
And a trailer parked in his.
Yeah, he's got a, he's got a horse trailer and a Conex box parked around his house. And I was supposed to talk to him, I talked to him one day, he was sick the week before last. And he said, talk to him next week. And the next week, I did not talk to him.
The slope on his property would preclude him from being able to put it pretty much anywhere else.
What's that?
The slope on his property would preclude him from being.
No, he can go store that stuff somewhere.
Somewhere else, yes.
He had lots of other options, truthfully. It was convenient to do that, and now it's inconvenient for him to move it because of the way it was stacked in those trailers. But neither of those are really city concerns, and I don't want to be a jerk about it, and I haven't been, but it is going on a year.
He's getting sick of me calling him when I'm getting calls from other people.
And I've tried to be lenient, but I told him, I just need to go work it, but I need a timeframe, but I've never received a timeframe. He has that trailer, he did tell me when we talked, we know from, that he does have a contract coming, and should be wrapped up in the next couple of weeks, but I need to give him an ultimatum, like, it needs to be gone by this date, period. Any other questions about the airport? Yes?
In the airport, did you all ever resolve the fence issue? I didn't.
No, sort of, yes, sort of. We met with Mark Lehman, explained the situation, it was a favorable conversation. He had misgivings after the conversation, then reached out to David about. I've since given David some direction, which he's been relayed back to Mark, and I think that'll settle the matter. I believe he's going to live up to the agreement, and he put the fence in, and he's working on getting the code and getting it done. So we explained your concern, council, this is something that's definitely on your radar, and we need to get it resolved as soon as possible. And she took completely. So I, I think he, I know Deborah told me today, she's had excellent relations with him, and I, I don't expect anything less.
No problem.
We had a really good conversation. So I, I think it'd go well, but I don't have a concrete answer to giving you, say, hey, he's got a contractor, he's coming this week. I don't have that here.
I understand.
All it does is positive discussion. Are there any other questions?
No, I'd like to report.
Thank you.
I'd like to report, like the progress on the control facility, thank you.
Yes.
Well, if there's anything else missing, again, just let us know. We provide these for viewer information, and they're really free to use. So I, I just want to make this comment, I meant to make it earlier, I'm sorry I made it so late in the meeting, because it was really good to have when everybody was here. But I want to give kudos to the council. I've been doing this for 10 years, Deborah's doing it for maybe a little bit longer.
A long time.
And I don't know what your experience has been, but my experience in all the cities I've worked for is that council members, this is their volunteer obligation, they don't have a lot of time, they're working professionals. And so more often than not, they've not read the packet. And unfortunately, it comes out in the discussion they have. And, and it's awkward moments for staff, because we gotta go, it's in the packet, it's on page 45, and, and you don't want to do that, you don't want to be that person. But you also don't, you know, want to look foolish, and especially if someone gets angry about it, like, hey, we should have done this. You did, it was in there. You, as a group, read and are more prepared than any council I've ever worked for. And I really, really want, one, thank you for that, and I appreciate what you do, and I want to just give kudos, because it's, it, it shows, it shows the decisions you make, it shows in the policies you set. It mean, it, it will make a difference. It'll make your time spent as a council member more meaningful and productive, simply because you're in, you will be well-informed. And, and I appreciate, I, I mean, I think Herb, I, I really appreciate the feedback I get, even though sometimes we disagree. I'd ra, I'd rather get that feedback than, than just not hearing it at all, or have someone who's a reading and doesn't know. I really, really enjoy working with you all in that respect, that you've become prepared, you've read, you know what your thoughts are on a matter, and you're prepared to ask questions. So thank you for doing that. Kudos to each of you, and please continue to do that.
And you're within three hours of your anniversary.
Let's look at another item.
Well, it's not my anniversary, I don't want to say it anymore. It's only like eight hours before we come back, or something.
Scott, thank you. I appreciate you saying that, and I totally agree. I think that this is an amazing council, and thank you for everything that you do.
I kind of like y'all, I'd like to keep.
Future agenda items.
I have only one item that somebody called me about, and I told him I would bring it up, and that is our brush pickup. He says that he exceeds his volume at monthly, and ends up having piles of brush in his yard that he has to hold on until next month. And he suggested, and I'm just going to throw this out there, that the city set up our chipper, maybe over at the airport property, let people come drop stuff off.
We, yeah, by the way, related to that, they have, they have roll-offs at Public Works Yard, which if it's the brush limbs, they can go throw it in, because the city council asks for that, and John did that, and I've done that. I've taken branches over there and thrown them in the roll-offs.
I'll relay that. Yeah, I, I wasn't terribly supportive of his idea.
It was open to public, but, because I know we use it for our, when we trim stuff, I guess, but I didn't know that it was open to public.
Well, in the discussion with city council last year, that was one thing you all told us, that it was open for citizens.
I know that, yeah, I appreciate, I know that Devin and I have talked about it, so we do have the chipper, and he did use it, and we had all those limbs.
Yeah.
And we were chipping them on-site, and what he asked for permission to do is to be able to pick up and load those, and take them to the parks, and then they could chip them as needed. And I said, that's, that's fine, Devin, I don't really care how you do it, if you chip it there, or you chip it later, it doesn't matter. Because his, and, and to his point, people just keep putting it out, whereas if they go and pick it up, it, one, the city gets cleaned immediately, they can pick up all of it, and, and just focus on doing that, and then they can ship it at their leisure. But creating an actual drop-off site is something I need to talk to him about, because.
That could, that could get over.
Not at the airport, because that creates problems.
Right. It's pros and cons, so we need to figure out how and where to do that.
It was his suggestion, I was just relaying it as I said I would.
So is that going to be an agenda item, since we're talking agenda items?
Yes, it's a future agenda item.
For a possible drop-off?
Yeah, well, just a brush, what it would be is addressing the volume of brush that's currently allowed under contract, and offering additional city services.
To deal with excesses.
Right.
And to be.
Because I'm in that boat, too.
Yeah.
To be clear, also, there are other options. You can order a roll-off. We talked during the, the windstorm about the bags that you can get, they're like four-yard bags. It's a couple hundred bucks to be able to take care of.
Yeah, he mentioned those.
Yep.
He didn't want to do that.
Or, again, correct me if I, I'm, I'm, I know this is correct, because I asked John, and he said, yes, we will take citizens.
I just need to verify that.
Brush.
I believe that's true, but I'm not positive.
But only brush, not trash.
If that is the case, we could put a notice in our utility bill next month that says.
I'm going to verify all that and tell you about what.
Yeah, because I have to have someone there while they do it, and so it might be a little.
Make Hong Kong, make Hong Kong make an appointment, drop it out.
Another agenda item is, can you bring to us, I, one of our, my constituents, they, by the time they get the, the bill in the mail, you know, they're out of town, they send a check, they can't send a check, they get here quick enough. And if they don't do that, they can pay with credit card, but then, of course, the city charges them the 5% we need to use a credit card. So.
We can do bank drafts.
Do what?
They will accept a bank draft.
A bank, yeah, but it's, it's, and that costs money for the bank drafts.
Oh, does it?
Ten dollars.
But do I?
Ten dollars.
Yeah, so it seems, but it seems like it's just a tight schedule to get paid.
They can set it up for auto payment. A lot of people don't, because they don't.
Right. But can you tell, bring to us what the city policy is on payment? Is it two weeks later? If the, if the, if the, like, a couple of weeks ago, I actually got a, a notice that said they were turning, the day I got the letter, they were turning the note, they were turning our power off the day before.
Oh.
By, because if you haven't paid this by, by December tenth, and it was, I got it on the eleventh.
Yeah, they had the date flipped, because I had some.
But related to that, can you update us on what the actual city policy is of when mailings go out and when?
I think I did this when I first got here, I'll, I'll refresh it. But I'll just tell you, one, the biggest issue is the U.S. postal system, and I'm not trying to put mirrors or blame, but, but that is a big, big issue, is we get that a lot, where we, we send them out, we mail, we know the date we mailed them, we mail them on such and such date.
Yeah.
Someone says, I just now got this, and it's fourteen days later. And so in that amount of time, we've already sent the cutoff for this.
Right.
So now they're trying to call for payment.
Right.
And sometimes they get, yeah, sometimes they get the cutoff payment in three days.
I tell you, a lot of it is that they misdeliver. The postal service is misdelivering astronomically.
It should be in the utility policies.
Like, you know, on our block, you get stuff from nine oh one, from two streets up.
Yep.
Don't mind, yeah, but you just bring that or send it to us.
Utility is going up.
Amazon.
Paying in.
Schedule.
Amazon.
Billings.
Do we need to start sending our, our bills out with Amazon?
They, they misdeliver, too.
Okay.
Yeah, I have to get my boxes off.
Our neighbor's gotten several, or three, five, or whatever.
Yeah, someone at the top of the hill bringing down a package that Christopher got for Chris, Joe for Christmas.
Yeah.
And said it's been delivered, and it was like, whoa, wait a minute, no, 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 and it's a big key box. And they were up the street, nowhere near our address.
Thank you.
Google has my, my address.
I never got one from my mother-in-law one time, somebody had a very nice, probably hangout.
At the neighbor's house, so.
All right, other items?
It's a pick and choose, whether.
Related to that, could you tell us, is it at all feasible where people could receive these via email versus postal, posting? Or just that's a ridiculous request, suggestion?
No, I, the new billing, well, I.
If, if we do the new billing.
Not currently, I don't believe. I'll double-check to see if our current provider allows that, but, but what I posed prior would be able to do that.
And I think most people prefer to get an email instead of a write.
You gotta text.
I kinda like getting it, because I like the, I'm weird, I like the newsletter, yeah.
Well, if you got it.
We'll put a link, an email for the newsletter.
I get mine on my, like, you're getting on my, like, your.
I got two, two suggestions. I think we should raise the pay for the city council by ten dollars. Just looking at the last year, I don't know about everybody else, speaking for myself. I'm spending ten, twelve, fifteen hours getting ready for meetings, plus five hours in meetings. And plus another five hours discussing things with the city administrator. And I think it's excessive. And I think the only way that we're gonna make city council attractive for, in the future, of course, none of us will get it, but raise the rate, I like to raise the rate ten dollars. So it's fifty dollars a meeting per council member and sixty for the mayor. Twenty-five percent increase.
You calculate one meeting a month.
You know how much hours we pay here? It's okay.
That's one item. Item number two, that I, I'm befuddled, and I don't really know what to ask for. I'm befuddled about the hotel tardy. We've had lots of discussions, we've got a lot of mad citizens, and, and I don't know what we can do. I mean, really, there's not a whole lot that I can see. But what I'd like to do is to get it to a point where we can have a discussion. If there's, if there's nothing we can do now, then we have to remedy that. We have to come up with a way that when citizens believe that there's, they're being treated unfairly,